All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March 26, 2025 zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be April 30, 2025 here at the Matthew Thornton Room at 6:30 PM. If everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please read the preamble, Rodney.
For those who are here for the first time or watching for the first time, the procedure is as follows for the zoning meeting. The petitions will be heard in order that they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abutters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances established the criteria must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor for public comment either in favor of or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for the rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and the public. However, discussions will not be followed, will not be allowed to devolve into back-and-forth arguments. All comments shall be made directed towards the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
How you doing tonight? All right, so the next meeting for the ZBA will be April 30, 2025, in the Matthew Thornton Room. Thank you for the preamble, and we have four people here this evening, so...
Chuck will need to be appointed as a voting member.
So Chuck, I'm going to appoint you to cover for Scott. Anyone who's here to do a petition this evening. Before I swear everybody in, we have four people on the board, which means you need to get three affirmative votes in order for your motion to carry. If you get too affirmative and too negative, your motion does not carry forward. So you have the option to have your hearing when we have a full board. That is your choice. If you choose to do that, you can. If you choose not to, that's fine as well. Just want to make everybody aware of that who's here tonight to talk about a petition. Did I get that correct?
Yep, that was correct, and I would handle it case by case, so it's very clear on what each applicant decides to do. We have six cases on the agenda tonight.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. Okay, you're appointed. So I'll call the name out. Anybody who is going to speak tonight for, against a petition, or you're presenting a petition, can you please raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. All right. Yes.
One change tonight is anyone who's speaking when you are asked to speak on a petition needs to sign in. There's a sign-in sheet right there at the front, so if you could please, before you speak at either the front microphone or the back microphone, just sign in, so when we're taking our notes, we get everyone's name correct. Thank you.
All right, the first petition is John O'Neil and Tinker Road LLC, petitioner-owner, variance under section 2.01.7 of the zoning ordinance to construct a proposed 69-unit elderly housing development beyond the required radius from the intersection of the Daniel Webster Highway and Bubusak Lake Road. The parcel is located at 19 Tinker Road in the R4 residential by soils in Aquifer Conservation District's tax map 2C, Lot 19, and tax map 2B, Lot 293-14-2, case number ZBA 202503. John O'Neil, are you here?
Monica Kaiser, on behalf of John O'Neil.
Okay, if you'd have a seat. Make sure that the microphone is bright green when you're speaking, and if you could sign in and state your name, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Monica Kaiser, K-I-E, S is in Sam, E-R, from Hopeful Phoenix, Gormley &amp; Roberts, Portsmouth Law Firm.
Can you please just check your microphone there waving us on, saying they can't hear you?
Oh, okay. I have to hold it?
No, 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 just push the button, and you should be fine.
Okay, so to start again, Monica Kaiser, K-I-E, S is in Sam, E-R, from Hopeful Phoenix, Gormley &amp; Roberts, Portsmouth Law Firm, here on behalf of John O'Neil. With me is Paige Libby from Jones &amp; Beach Engineering. She's done the preliminary technical work. Also with me is...
John Mangano, one of John O'Neil's partners. Sorry about that.
In the front row here.
Okay.
And do you need to have a copy of the...
I don't think so.
Okay.
Do you want to give us a quick overview of what we're looking at, and then we'll go into the five points?
So the property is a 22-acre parcel on Tinker Road, about two miles outside of the, I believe it's about two miles from the edge of the radius of the elderly housing overlay zone. It has a little bit of frontage on Tinker Road, but most of its frontage is on Continental Drive, which is fairly busy, and there are also some wetlands on the Continental Drive side. The proposal here would be to construct an elderly housing development of essentially, as proposed right now, about 69 units and some common land held by the association and some common buildings for the benefit of all of the residents. This lot is, has municipal water and sewer available. Access would be from the lesser-traveled road of Tinker, coming in off via a private road that would be owned and maintained by the condominium association. That is the overview. We were here, but were not heard, I think, last month as a result of a notice issue, so there was a renotice to capture some additional abutters, I believe, on the other side of Tinker Road. The original petition was prepared by attorney John Bosin, who isn't available tonight, and so our firm volunteered to assist Mr. O'Neil. I guess I would start by asking if there are any basic questions about what I've said so far, or about the property, or about the technical aspects, or if you would like to prefer to go straight into the criteria. Usually, I introduce the project and then have technical do a brief overview and then address the criteria, but if you have some questions out of the gate, I'm happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions. I'll reserve my right to ask questions later. Chuck, do you have any questions? Rich? Rod? All right, why don't we start with the five criteria, and we'll ask questions as we go.
Sure.
If you could stop after each criterion, in case there's any questions, we appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
So I take the first two criteria together. Granting the requested variances will not be contrary to the public interest or contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The case I rely on is the Malachi-Glen case, which says that those criteria are considered together, and says that the test is essentially whether there is, whether granting the variance would alter the essential character of the locality or threaten the public health, safety, and welfare. Another way of looking at it is whether granting the variance would undermine the basic objectives of your zoning ordinance. And that case stands for the proposition, or stands for the position that conflict with the ordinance alone is not enough. So we understand that we're here to propose a use that is not permitted in this zone because the elderly housing overlay does not come all the way down to this area, but the fact that this proposed use conflicts with the ordinance is not alone a legal and lawful basis to deny the proposal. You have to look beyond the mere conflict and look at what use is proposed and whether that conflicts with your ordinance's basic zoning objectives, which is essentially to preserve the public health, safety, and welfare, make Merrimack an attractive place to live, just looking at your ordinance and its initial purpose. We're proposing a residential use in a residential zone. We're not proposing a noxious use like some of the cases that have been cited, and we're not proposing a commercial use. The density that we propose here is significantly less than what would be permitted if we were in the elderly housing overlay zone, and when you zoom out and look at the overview of the area, some of the areas, I believe it would be west of here, are significantly, are developed in a similar density. Not all, but there are definitely subdivisions in the area that are, that have a similar density. Now, your ordinance has made a provision, and your town has made a provision and acknowledged that there is a need for, of course, additional housing, but that there's also a specific need for elderly housing. And so at some point, the town created the elderly housing overlay to encourage the development of certain more densely populated elderly housing proposals, whether they be nursing homes, assisted living, or whether they be like over 55 communities, is what's proposed here. I think that the fact that that amendment or revision was brought into your ordinance demonstrates that the town has identified that this is a need. Now, that doesn't mean it's a need right here. We're here to address that, but I think the need for the housing is clear based on the information from the 2013 master plan about the age of homeowners at that time and the growth that Merrimack has seen in the last, you know, 10, 15 years. There are, there is a demand as people age out of their larger homes. They do not want big properties to take care of. They appreciate having property commonly owned where maintenance is not the individual responsibility of the landowner. They often prefer to downsize and maybe have a smaller home without as much upkeep required as well. Paige has prepared a sort of a overview of the elderly housing overlay area to just give us a sense of where this area is. So as I understand it, the elderly housing area goes sort of on the north and south side of town center, but also there's a bubble out to the west as well. And what we tried to do was Paige did some significant research that she can address in more detail about, well, okay, there's this area of town that's been identified as appropriate for this area. Is there significant-sized lots that are undeveloped? Is there an actual, you know, is there land there that's ripe to be developed for this way? Or is that land mostly already developed? And Paige tried to go through and look at the largest parcels in the overlay to determine whether they were developable or not, or whether they were already being used commercially or whatnot. And I can ask her to speak in more detail to her analysis, but basically what we're finding is, and I know that you've, you have another petition to entertain tonight for an elderly housing proposal outside of this overlay, and I know that, you know, in the recent past, you've granted a variance to permit an elderly housing development outside of this area. I think in that case, it was about, you know, whether it was maybe a mile outside from the center or a mile and a half instead of a mile, certainly closer. My point is that you're getting these applications, and I think the reason you're getting these applications is because while the town has identified this area, the potential is not there, whether it's because there's land that's already developed and built out, whether it's the commercial corridor. So the need is there, and the area that's been identified is not large enough to provide ample opportunity. So our position would be that building out a elderly housing development in, at 19 Tinker Lane would be keeping with the spirit of the ordinance to provide the elderly housing, and it would not be contrary to the public interest because it's not going to threaten the health, safety, and welfare. Again, not a noxious use, not a commercial use. It is going to develop a piece of property that hasn't been developed in this manner. It is going to be a change, but I would submit to you that the change that's going to occur from the development of the elderly housing units, while more than a conventional subdivision, which by right could do about 22 homes on larger lots, the development that's going to occur on the parcel is about the same. So you can either develop, you can put in road and develop 22 larger lots, or you can develop the area for more smaller units. But the property is still going to be developed in a similar manner. You're still going to need some kind of road. You're still going to need the property to be cleared, graded, and developed. So then, my assessment is that the impact from the additional elderly units is not going to be as, it's not going to be much more than it would be for permitted use, and we can get into more of that later. But the number of units proposed sounds like the impact would be significant in terms of traffic and other conditions, but when you look at the information further, it's not clear that it's a whole lot different. And so then, we're comparing two kinds of residential uses, one that's more dense than the other.
So we're kind of going a little off track here, and I mean, I literally would just need to go through the, I want to do this based on the criteria that we have in front of us. I appreciate the explanation, but it's going a little bit more than, a little more information we need. So, I mean, if you want to...
Sure, I was done with those first two criteria.
Right, right. Well, I understand you're lumping them together. If you want to, I mean, but I don't, I get kind of, kind of repeating a little bit here, so we get what you're saying. I mean, I have questions regarding, you know, where you're saying that it's not going to, you know, contrary to public interest. I mean, Tinker Road, it's in and of itself, I mean, there's a couple of developments off of Tinker Road. You're talking about adding an additional, what, an additional 69 to 138 cars to that road at any given time? And so I'm just curious how that, you feel that that's not contrary to public interest if you're adding, again, provided they have two cars, and that's not even going into guests and holidays and stuff like that.
Yeah, and that's, but that's a reasonable assumption. You know, lots of people have two cars. Some people downsizing might go down to one car. There's engineering, traffic engineering manuals that you can look at that will tell you what the trip generation is for certain types of uses. And we've reached out to our, one of our other engineers and asked them to analyze this, and if you look up at the screen, are they looking?
I think they have it in front of them.
Okay. So yeah, if you look up at the screen, you can look at the difference between the vehicle trips for a not age-restricted 23 units versus an age-restricted 69 dwelling units. And again, you know, 69 is what we're proposing right now. We have had some meetings with the abutters. We have made some tweaks to the plan to take into consideration their feedback. We had a neighborhood meeting where we answered a number of questions and held the feedback. So you can see that there is a little bit more AM and PM peak traffic for age-restricted than there is for the 23 regular units, but it's like four trips more. So four trips more for, you know, nearly three times the number of units. That's what I mean when I say it's not as intensive as you think. You hear 69 units versus 23 units, you assume that the traffic is going to be three times as bad or three times the impact. And what I'm trying to tell you is, when you look at the trip generation for permitted 23-unit development, at peak hours, you get an in and out of 5 and 15, and you have in and out of 10 and 19 for the age-restricted.
When was your traffic study done?
It's not a traffic study. It is, and that is a matter that would be, you know, assuming we get relief from you, we go to the planning board, we have a traffic engineer do a full study, the town hires an engineer to evaluate the work of our engineer. At this stage, before we get any variances, we are relying on a trip generation manual. We are not relying on a traffic study. Traffic engineers have developed these guidelines to determine estimated uses based on types of, you know, is it commercial? Is it residential? Is it age-restricted? Is it a mall? Is it a doctor's office? You know, what it is. So there's a big manual, and that is the first place that you're going to go to try to get your arms around the potential issue, assuming then before the planning board, there would be a more significant traffic study undertaken, which would rely, I believe, specifically on Tinker Road.
Yeah, so just to speak to that a little more, the traffic study, if we do a more in-depth one at the planning board level, would study the existing traffic on Tinker Road, but where the proposed development is not constructed yet, we would still be relying on this data in order to provide the additional trips for that traffic study. So that's really the only additional thing that gets added, is going out and doing more in-depth analysis on what the existing traffic is.
That's my understanding. I think zoning can also ask for a traffic study, can't we? Or did that change recently?
No, the zoning board can ask for one if they feel like they need that information to make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
In any event, that is some of the data that we rely on, and if you look, can you scroll up? So you can look at the traffic volumes for Continental Boulevard east of Natticoop Road, east of Tinker Road. You can look at the two-way average annual daily traffic volume. So that data exists. It's with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, and then the trip generation is, you know, a traffic engineering model. So we have some information that would suggest to you that 69 age-restricted units is not going to have a dramatic effect on traffic compared to a permitted use of 23 units. And the proposal, if you scroll back down again, we have like maybe four or five cars above during the AM and PM peak hours, but on the Saturday and Sunday, we actually would, there would be fewer trips in and out based on the modeling that's available. So that's what I mean when I say it's not as intensive as it might sound at first blush.
Okay. So any other questions on the first two variances, gentlemen?
First two, yeah, criteria.
The first two criteria, sorry.
Yeah, I have a couple. What are the sizes of these houses?
They're about 2,000 square feet. So there's, we actually have some renderings I can pull up, which show them a little bit better. So they're ranch-style homes. That's the clubhouse. Single floor with garages.
Okay, so is this going to operate with like an HOA?
Yes, yeah, so the whole, the road would be privately owned, utilities on-site would be privately owned. It would have a, it would be a condo association.
Okay, and how is the, how is age being enforced?
The age would be enforced via the declarations.
Okay. What restrictions will there be on who can stay there and what family they can have there? I'm just curious.
Oh, like adult children or something living in the home? I don't believe that the zoning ordinance speaks to that at all. Certainly, the HOA can develop their own rules about that, but I don't think that the ordinance speaks to that at all.
Okay, so there's no rule or policy that prevents someone from like having extended family living with them?
No, not necessarily.
You can certainly, I mean, the boards can ask for condominium documents to be submitted. Certainly, that's not usually a this-stage issue. That's a planning board stage issue.
Right.
Because those declarations and restrictions have to be reviewed by town council, and they have to incorporate all of the conditions that may come from this board and the planning board. So if the boards want, you know, specific restrictions within the bounds of the law, that's something that can be discussed at a later stage in the proceedings and then incorporated. But generally speaking, John has, Mr. O'Neil has developed other age-restricted associations out on the seacoast, so we would probably start with a declaration that we've used in one of those scenarios as an initial starting point, the boilerplate, and then get into specific concerns that you all might have, or that staff might have, or that the planning board would have. But generally speaking, these things are a declaration that runs with the property, runs with the condominium units, that requires the parties to be of a certain age, the owners to be of a certain age. And then I think beyond that, it's a balancing test to see how many rules you want to have in your association.
Well, I guess my question is, because this isn't the first time we've discussed elderly housing in the board, and one of the things that I've always found interesting are the stipulations that get placed on the owners. So let's say you have an owner move into one of these units, and a year later, they decide to sell. Are they just going to a regular Realtor and, you know, selling this to the general public? And if that's the case, what's to stop someone in their 20s from moving in? I'm just curious mechanically how that works.
Yeah, I think most situations, what you're going to have, if a party wants to come in and buy a property and they want bank financing, what's going to happen is a bank is going to review, the bank will do its own title search and look at the restrictions on the property, and then they're not going to lend, I think is part of the issue, is they're not going to lend to somebody who, you know, doesn't meet the profile. And then the restrictions, I mean, it's kind of like if you, if you buy a property that has an easement over it for, you know, your neighbor to access their house, you know, like they have a driveway over your property. Like, yeah, somebody, I guess, could come in and start putting up blockades, right, and not abide by that, but that's, that kind of doesn't happen because the restriction is clear on the face of the deed when the person takes ownership, and it'd be clear in this case that the entire area is age-restricted.
Actually, what I was referring more to was like an investment, I'm sorry.
I mean, I see where you're going. I just want to keep it more, a little more on track.
Okay, sure.
Any other questions regarding the first two criteria? All right, values, can you read in, values of surrounding properties will not be diminished, please?
So in our position, the value of surrounding properties is not going to be diminished for a couple of different reasons. Again, it's, it is maybe perhaps more densely developed than some of the immediately developed properties, but I would say overall, when you zoom out, it is not, it's not sort of uncharacteristically dense compared to some of the other subdivisions that have been constructed in the immediate area. It's not a noxious use, it's a residential use, and similar to, you know, a lesser number of units, the proposal has to comply with certain yard setbacks and dimensional requirements, and in this case, we maintain those setbacks so that there is a buffer between the houses on our property and the lot lines that exist on the other side. It's a significantly less-dense proposal than, as I say, would be... It's a significantly less dense proposal than, as I say, would be permitted in the elderly housing zone. So in other words, the town, in contemplating elderly housing, acknowledged that those properties could be more densely developed. And we're not seeking to, to have that density on this lot because that would be well over a hundred units. Um, so we're proposing something significantly less, albeit more than a traditional subdivision. Um, building setbacks will be met. And the road length is also limited. And then some of the more traditional impacts in terms of buffering and the road and the build-out would be subject to the jurisdiction of the planning board to sort of drill down on specific proposals. But we have a situation where we have a residential use in a residential zone with off-street parking available, with, um, families that are, are advanced in age. They're not gonna have young children entering the school system, they're not gonna have young children getting on bus stops. And their cars are accommodated, you know, off the street and the street is not the obligation of the town. Um, and if all of the development is clustered and there are sufficient setbacks to the abutting properties, then there's not gonna be an impact, a negative impact. Um, because the use doesn't really conflict, I would argue it's sort of more of a complementary use in a way.
Any questions regarding values on surrounding properties? Okay, uh, unnecessary hardship?
Um, yep, and, uh, do you do substantial justice last?
Uh, no, you, I actually was gonna, uh, substantial justice you covered, you missed spirit of the ordinance. You substantial justice and granting the variance. You did spirit and public interest, actually, public interest in spirit you combined in the front and then you did substantial justice after that, so.
Yeah, so substantial justice, as you know, the test is, you know, is if there is no benefit to the public in denying the variance that outweighs the hardship to the applicant, then substant- you know, then substantial justice exists. So in this case, the, the denial would, um, cause significant harm to the applicant. Um, and I would argue i- it would cause harm to the public and to the town by denying a use that is needed. I would submit to you that the concerns of the public, denying this particular development doesn't address the concerns of the public because the concerns that they have would be concerns whether this was developed in this manner or whether it was developed for, you know, twenty-two or three units. You still have similar concerns. Um, there'll be a change, there'll be a build-out. Um, but their concerns can be addressed by the way we do the build-out, by pulling the houses in away from the property lines. Um, and then the town's interests can be preserved and addressed um, throughout the process in terms of additional conditions um, and input in terms of declarations and the like. So because there's not a benefit to the public from denying that outweighs the hardship to Mr. O'Neal, I would say this factor is satisfied.
What about regards to special conditions?
Yep, getting there, so, um, unnecessary hardship requires, um, it's a three-part test, you're looking at the special conditions of the property. Um, the proposed, excuse me, whether there's a fair and substantial relationship and whether the proposed use is reasonable. So this property as sort of unsubdivided is, uh, larger than many of the surrounding properties. It has, um, frontage that's bisected on two different roads, Tinker and Continental. Um, Continental Road, um, I think is, uh, more busy than Tinker Road. Um, so there are some issues with creating a regular subdivision in terms of where you would run the road and then where you would create the compliant lot sizes. So the build-out would be, again, I would argue similar, but the, because the lots are required to be so much larger. And I think another special condition is that this is about two miles outside the elderly housing overlay district. It is not as far as, as some would have you believe. And there isn't the type of parcel like this available to build inside the elderly housing overlay. It's twenty-two acre lot where most of the surrounding lots are about half an acre to an acre. If it were in the elderly housing zone, it could carry a hundred and seventy-six units. Um, it's not, so we're only proposing, you know, sixty-nine. Um, we would submit that the use is reasonable, um, the, there's, Vigent v. Hudson is the case that talks about if a use is permitted, you know, it's deemed reasonable. Now, this type of dense use is not permitted, but a residential use is. And I would submit to you that allowing, uh, a more dense residential use in a residential zone is a reasonable proposal to provide the type of housing that the town has identified, um, is needed. Use restrictions in terms of fair and substantial relationship, use restrictions exist to provide, to, to keep similar types of uses together and to provide for sort of a, a reasonable transition between, um, different uses. So, you know, you don't wanna have a gravel pit in the middle of a residential area. Um, here, I think that the purpose of the use restrictions is met because the use is a residential one. Um, and the increased density is not to the degree uh, that would be permitted in the elderly housing zone, it's less than half. Um, and it's not all that different from some of the subdivisions, particularly west of this area. So for all those reasons, I would say literal enforcement, um, of the ordinance uh, would create an unnecessary hardship to the applicant.
Thank you.
Paige, is there anything else that you could think of?
I think you covered everything.
Thank you. Um, Rich, I apologize for interrupting you early, I just wanted to get through the criteria. But if you wanna finish your question, line of questioning, that would be acceptable?
Sure, um, my, I, my only real question here was, um, uh, I, I understand that, you know, a, a young couple's not going to be getting a VHA loan or, or FHA loan, I'm sorry, or, or something like that to get into one of these units. But, uh, in, investment loans are, are very different. Um, so I'm just curious what would prevent somebody from pulling out a bunch of investment loans and then renting them out?
Are you talking about like a short-term rental situation?
Uh, talking about like a-
I mean, somebody could hold, I, I suppose, I mean, let's, let's pretend for a minute that we're not in, uh, an HOA association. I mean, somebody, you know, I could buy a house in an HOA because I wanna have an investment property.
Right.
Um, but I, I think whether these units are rented or not can be addressed in the declaration. But, um, I think even if they were rented, the people living there would have to, would have to meet the age requirement. So I think there's opportunities to address, you know, we don't, we don't want these units available for lease. You know, maybe, maybe that's an opportunity, that's a significant restriction on Mr. O'Neal as well as, you know, a subsequent owner, you know? But that is the type of condition that would be batted around later in the process. Um, there's case law that says that boards are not, you're not supposed to anticipate non-compliance and rely on non-compliance as a reason to deny. Um, I think it's an appropriate concern, but I think there'll be a way to address that to the town's satisfaction as we go through the process. And I would encourage you not to, um, assume that people won't comply.
No, understood, I, um, like, like I said before, when we've had, uh, meetings like this in the past, there've usually been plans on, on how to, how to maintain that. Cause I think my concern is that there are a lot of property owners that are using investment loans to purchase condos in this area. Not all of them live in this area, but they certainly own property in it. And I, I, I just, I'm curious what stops, you know, somebody from, you know, pulling out an investment loan and rent, and pulling ten units and renting them out. And I, I totally understand your point. Um, my, my, my question really isn't about the compliance of it. Um, it's more about the, like I said, the, the mechanics, what's, what's to stop somebody from doing that? I think, cause the, the concern that I have personally is that when we're talking about twenty-three versus sixty-nine units, um, you're absolutely right that in a, you know, in a, in an elderly housing, there's gonna be a lot less traffic. So that's, I'm just curious what checks and balances are in place here, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's-
All right, that's fine. So, yeah, I, it was just a question, I'm, I, I think I'm good, thank you.
So one of the things you do point out, and a- again, you talked a lot about substantial justice, you talk about impact on the community and stuff. And you did a lot of comparison, um, and you're abs- in, to Rich's point about the elderly area, and you made the point as well, and in elderly, elderly overlay, they can cram more houses in there as opposed to twenty-two. But I, I think that, and I guess it'd be a question probably more for your client, who unfortunately is not here to be able to answer it. But I think that the abutters, and there's probably one or two of them in the audience right now, um, are more, a little bit more concerned with, I mean, when you start talking about sixty-nine units and we're talking between sixty-nine and a hundred thirty-eight cars as opposed to twenty-three and forty-six cars, it's a big difference on Tinker Road and, and the traffic. And, and Tinker Road is, is, there, there's been other build-outs on Tinker Road as well. And Tinker Road is also used as a pass-through to get further into Merrimack, which, um, so i- i- the, the amount of traffic on that road, and I realize that, you know, elderly people may or may not be driving at all hours, but that road still gets a lot of use. And I know that the traffic studies have been done on, you know, a very, a variety of roads around here. And I always question those because, uh, traffic was studied, was done on a road where I lived and they said it was acceptable, but now it takes an extra two, three minutes to get out of my development because of, because of traffic. So I, I, just curious as to, you know, you, you're talking about the substantial justice, you're talking about that, and you, and you don't have an answer, that's fine. Uh, maybe, but I just think that there's a big difference between saying sixty-nine homes and twenty-two homes. And I think that people's preference, especially in Merrimack, cause people moved to Merrimack because they want a piece of land, it would be the twenty-two homes and not the sixty-nine homes. And when looking, and even looking at this map, you kinda crammed a couple in there. The like number ten and, and number thirty-one, those are kinda crammed right in there, um, you know, so. I, it's, I, I see that as, you know, when you're talking about substantial justice, it's, it, it, I don't know, maybe you could clarify that for me because I, I, when I'm seeing this is, it's just, um, there, there's a, there's a lot of questioning here regarding this many units and that type, that packed locations.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we had originally proposed some units in that area close to LeBlanc Lane. Um, that we removed those after meeting with the abutters. Um, I mean, I'm not in a position to offer to take things off the map at this moment.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not asking you to.
But I think that, you know, I think that the purpose of this meeting is to examine, you know, I guess-
The feasibility of this.
The, uh, the feasibility and, and the appetite. Um, and I under- I, and I think the point is, is that there is going to be a change, there is going to be an effect, there always is with any type of development.
Sure.
Um, but I don't think, I think the information that we have at this moment, and you may decide you want more information, but the information we have at this moment is that the effect is not gonna be three times as much traffic. It is not gonna be, you know, just because it's three times twenty-three units.
Right.
Um, and, you know, you, you can accept that or not accept that, but I think that is the indication that we have based on the data that is available. Um, we have, like I said, we pulled away those units. Um, and we did make some other, do you wanna tell him the other adjustments that were made?
Yeah, so we had a preliminary meeting with the abutters, um, just to, we know that sometimes these meetings, there's a lot of things on the agenda, they don't always get to talk for as long as they would like to um, or get the answers that they want to be able to get. So we felt it was, it was beneficial to have a preliminary meeting and kind of hear what some of their concerns are and see if we can address any of them, um, right off the bat before we even get to you or to the planning board. Um, so some of the concerns we heard, one was the traffic. So after that meeting, we did get this, um, our traffic data put together. The second was proximity to the abutters that are in this area because we did have four homes that were situated in this location versus, um, up close to Tinker Road. We didn't have any homes, we had them kind of set back from the street. So we eliminated the units that were there and moved them elsewhere, um, on the interior of the development in order to provide a wooded buffer in that area. Um, we also do have a clubhouse, which will have, um, a gym space and event space for the residents. And we originally had pickleball courts out behind, um, the clubhouse in this field area. Um, but what we heard from the abutters was that they were concerned about noise, um, from the pickleball. So we definitely did away with the pickleball and will have something, uh, much quieter like a putting green or something in that field area, um, behind the clubhouse. Um, so that was the se- the third thing. Um, the sewer, so the, the sewer is up, um, at the intersection of Hampstead Road and Tinker Road. So we'll be, we already met with, um, DPW in advance, um, of doing this plan. And we'll be bringing sewer up the road, um, to our development. So that will also provide, um, much closer proximity for some of the residents on Tinker Road to tie into sewer. Um, that they currently would have to, um, foot a pretty large bill to, to, uh, try to connect a sewer all the way up Tinker Road, which is about five hundred feet, uh, maybe a little bit more. Um, and then the other concern was tree removal, so we talked a lot about that. Um, and I think Monica made the point earlier in that the, the twenty-three lot, um, proposed subdivision, which could be constructed by Wright, to actually takes up a similar footprint on the site due to the, the larger lot size. Whereas with this, we can kind of tighten up the units, put them close together. Um, versus the other, um, type of subdivision where they would have to meet setbacks between the buildings and the lots. Um, so, but we do have a, we're keeping a wooded buffer in any areas that we can around the proximity of the lot. And the developers also committed to do a, um, pretty in-depth landscaping plan, which would be submitted as part of the planning board process as well. Um, and they do that on all of their projects, just to buffer their, their developments from the residents. Um, and then the other thing that's unique to note about this is that the Hampstead Road subdivision has their open space, which surrounds most of our property on two sides. Um, so that all will remain as forested as well. So there's kind of a, a buffer that's al- already in place, um, around our subdivision on two sides.
Okay. Any other questions on the board? Okay.
Um, I noticed you've got two entrances exits it. Uh, one of them is on the blank lane.
Yes.
Will any changes be made to LeBlanc for this traffic? If I remember correctly, that is somewhat of a sharp turn coming off of LeBlanc to the right?
Oh, to come off of LeBlanc to Tinker Road?
Coming off of LeBlanc, taking a right onto Tinker, I think that's a pretty sharp right.
Yeah, so that would be something that we would have to look at as part of the traffic study. We would be looking at site distance, um, from each of our entrances and very likely that we would be asked by the planning board to look at the intersection of LeBlanc Lane and, or sorry, LeBlanc Road and Tinker Road, um, to make sure that that's a safe exit. So that's another thing that would come up as part of the traffic study.
And I, I mean, it's possible that it would not be permitted to take a right off of LeBlanc, that they would have to go around.
Yeah, or they may also say, you know, the planning board may also say, we would prefer you just have the one entrance and not have two entrances, just have one on Tinker Road. So that's something we would be looking into.
Right, thank you.
Chuck?
Could you give us an overview of, uh, how your proposed project, uh, affects the wetlands?
Yeah, so there's, this property actually only has small amounts of wetlands on the property. So there's one small wetland pocket right here in the center. Um, this kind of loop is surrounding it. Um, so we are meeting the buffer with all of our structures and the road. Um, so that area won't be disturbed, there'll be kind of a, a forested pocket right in the middle of that loop. Um, and then there's a couple other small wetland areas, there's a small wetland pocket here. Um, and again, we're meeting the, the required buffer to that. And then there is one over here as well. And then two small ones here and here. So for a property of this size, it actually has not very much wetland, um, from what I'm used to seeing. from what I'm used to seeing. Most properties that are this size and undeveloped still are, you know, there's wetlands sporadically throughout the property or larger wetlands. So, we are avoiding all the buffers, we don't have any proposed wetland buffer impact or wetland disturbance. Um, and there will be, when we get to the planning board level, we will need to do a full stormwater management, um, analysis, which will have to be reviewed by the town and the state, because it's a large enough project, it'll have to go, um, before DES to be reviewed. So, the stormwater will all have to be treated in compliance with their regulations to maintain, um, water quality going to the wetlands as well.
Also, Chuck?
Yeah.
All right, if there's no other questions on the board, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. I have a couple of letters that I need to read into, um, to the record, so if you'll please, uh, bear with me. This one is from Michael and Heather Martin, Three Hampstead Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire, zero-three-zero-five-four. All right, so, uh, "Bees, dear members of the zoning board of adjustment, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the variance request for nineteen Tinker Road, which seeks to construct a sixty-nine unit elderly housing development in area not zoned for such high-density development. The proposal poses several risks to traffic safety, environmental sustainability, municipal infrastructure, and local property values, making it a direct threat to our community. Approving this variance would set a dangerous precedent undermining the integrity of our zoning laws and the Merrimack master plan." Citing first, "One, traffic and safety risks: increased congestion and public danger. The Tinker Road Continental Boulevard intersection is already congested during peak hours, and additional hundred-plus vehicles from this development will worsen delays and increase the risk of accidents. Continental Boulevard has a high-speed traffic flow, making it dangerous for elderly drivers attempting to enter and exit Tinker Road. A lack of comprehensive traffic impact study means no mi- mitig- mitigation plan exists for increased congestion or safety hazards. Evidence of risk: A fatal crash on Continental Boulevard in January twenty-twenty-three highlights the area's existing dangers. Increased traffic volume from this development will only amplify these risks." Number two, "Environmental and water quality threats. The proposed site is within the Aquifer Conservation District, a protected area crucial to Merrimack's drinking water supply. High-density developments in such areas pose significant risks to groundwater contamination. Increased, uh, impervious services, surfaces will, um, heighten stormwater runoff, leading to flooding, soil erosion, and water contamination. NHK study, similar concerns arose in London area, New Hampshire, where a high-density development was found to increase stormwater runoff, leading to a localized flooding and water quality issues." Cited also the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Uh, "Without full environmental impact study, approving this project is irresponsible." Number three, "Infrastructure strain in water and sewer. The Merrimack Village District, MVD, manages nine thou- nine hundred thirty thousand eight hundred feet of water mains, nine hundred thirty fire hydrants, six groundwater wells, and three water storage tanks. An el- in, in already aging infrastructure that requires continuous upgrades, a six-G unit development, or I'm sorry, six-G, pause, sixty-nine unit development will further strain the system. Emergency response times: Merrimack operates with a fire and rescue shift of nine personnel per twenty-four hour period. Increased population density will overload emergency services, delaying response times. Neighboring communities report EMS response times ranging from seven to fourteen minutes, meaning Merrimack could see further delays. Without a full municipal impact analysis, this project should not proceed." Number four, "Economic harm: Declining property values and taxpayer, taxpayer burden. Studies indicate that high-density developments lower single-family home values due to increased congestion, noise, and overuse of municipal resources. NHK study in Bedford, New Hampshire, our proposed high des- high-density development faced strong opposition as homeowners cited declining property values in neighboring towns where similar developments had been approved. A local real estate assessment showed single-family home values declined by up, declined up to ten percent in the immediate vicinity of high-density projects. If approved, this variance would open the door for further high-density projects, eroding the suburban uh, character that makes Merrimack desirable. Zoning violations and legal precedents against the development. The two thousand thirteen Merrimack master plan aims to preserve suburban character and prevent overdevelopment. Granting this variance violates the town's long-term planning objectives." Legal precedent, Garrison versus, uh, or, sorry, Garrison v. Town of Hennecker, two thousand six, the New Hampshire Supreme Court denied a variance for an industrial plant in a residential zone, ruling that it would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Similarly, similarly, this sixty-nine unit development is incompatible with existing zoning laws and should be denied. Ignoring established zoning laws undermines the community trust and sets a precedent for developers to exploit variances. Final request: Deny the variance. This proposal fails to align with Merrimack zoning laws, infrastructure capacity, and public safety needs. It jeopardizes our town's water supply, traffic safety, property values, and emergency services. I urge the zoning board to uphold the integrity of Merrimack zoning law and reject this variance. I hope the board hears our concerns alongside other residents and expect the board to act in the best interests of the community. Sincerely, Michael and Heather Martin of Three Hampstead Road, Merrimack." The next one, uh, is, uh, "Opposition to variance under variance, sorry, opposition to zoning variance for elderly housing on Tinker Road in Merrimack, New Hampshire, case number ZBA twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three, introduction. The proposed zoning variance should be denied. The applicant cannot carry its burden of proof on any, much less all, other criteria for obtaining a variance. Variances are supposed to be hard to obtain. A variance is a violation of an ordinance, all right, and is not only allowed when it would be unconstitutional to apply it to specific property. That is not the case here. We address each of the criteria for granting a variance. The applicant needs to carry all of the criteria, but in this case, the applicant cannot carry all." Argument. First, the applicant has failed to allege, much less prove, any credible unnecessary hardship that would necessitate a variance, because it can't. The applicant must prove that the zoning restriction, as applied to this particular property, interferes with the reasonable use considered the unique setting of the property. Uh, there is nothing unique about this property that meets the test. The property can be developed for a standard residential neighborhood without a variance consistent with the surrounding community. This is not like the Bella Vance case, where a commercial-use variance was granted because the area had essentially become commercial. Here, there are no elderly housing complexes surrounding this property. Without a unique and substantial hardship with respect to this property, the applicant falls, I'm sorry, fails the hardship test and analysis, and the analysis could end here. Second, the applicant has, uh, failed to carry its burden of proof that the variance will not decrease the value of the surrounding property. Third, the variance would be directly contrary to the spirit of the Orient, which is to centralize elderly housing in a specific area. The property is not just a few feet beyond the permitted one-mile radius, it is approximately five miles from the intersection of DW and Babusick Lake Road, uh, which is four miles outside the zone. Fourth, the variance is not in the best interest of the community. Elderly housing within designated boundaries near the town center is strategically planned to ensure accessibility to convenience for res- uh, sorry, accessibility and convenience for residents. Deviating from these boundaries would disrupt this careful planning and compromise the quality of life for elderly residents. The community's welfare should be prior, should be prioritized, and the ordinance should be upheld to maintain consistency and order. Also, the public interest would be harmed by adding sixty-nine units to the already overburdened and dangerous intersection of Tinker Road and Continental Boulevard. There have been many accidents there, and wait times are already unreasonable at rush hour. The variance would exacerbate the problem. Last, granting the variance would not do substantial justice. This variance, this variance request is simply to maximize profit. Granting this variance would eviscerate the ordinance and establish a negative precedent for the future zoning decisions in Merrimack. If this property qualifies for an elderly housing variance, every resident-zoned property in Merrimack would qualify for the same variance. It is important to maintain the integrity of zoning laws and to ensure that exceptions, uh, are made, are not made lightly. A precedent of leniency in granting variances will lead, or granting variances will lead to further re- uh, requests and ultimately undermine the purpose of zoning and planning laws. Conclusion. In conclusion, the applicant fails to carry its burden for a variance." Signed by a lot of people. Um, and, uh, I will try to read some of the names. We've got Phil Goddard, James Oshred, uh, Phil Goddard of twenty-five Dun- Dunbarton Road, James Orchok of twenty-four Dunbarton Road, Peter Hebert, twenty-two Dunbarton Road, Gary Sinclair, eighteen Dunbarton Drive, uh, Margaret Goddard, twenty-five Dunbarton Drive, uh, Debbie Locke, seven Dunbarton Drive, Lori Locke, seven Dunbarton Drive, Sally Barneck, nine Hampstead Drive, Deb Berl, uh, nineteen Hampstead Drive, Retha Sinclair, eighteen Dunbarton Drive, Dennis Flynn, twenty Dunbarton Drive, um, Mark, I can't read the last name, I think it's Monroe, twenty-one Dun- Drive, Hebert, Roger Hebert, twenty-four Hampstead Drive, Mary Hebert, twenty-five Hamp- Hampstead Road, uh, Alexey, twenty-two Tinker Road, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, Doug Fawn and Shreik Khan, to Le Blank Lane, Donald, um, Weiss, ten Dunbarton Drive, Suzanne Weiss, ten Barton Drive, Kim Diggins, eleven Hampstead Road, uh, Michael Martin, three Hampstead Road, um, Revocable Trust on twenty-three Dunbarton Drive, sorry, I couldn't read the name, Tammy Schultz, seventeen Hampstead Road, Aaron Young, eleven Dunbarton Drive, and, uh, is it Neil Colvin, five Dunbarton Drive, that's this one. The next one. No, I'm good, I can keep going. I had a Red Bull before the meeting. All right, so, "We are in opposition for granting the variance for a number of reasons. First, it would substantially and permanently change our neighborhood and the surrounding ones for rural, uh, residential housing, with traditional spaced lots to one where density, uh, where densely populated housing becomes the norm. To us, this is not in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance and would set a precedent where every lot of similar size can now become densely populated, forever changing the landscape and impacting many similar neighborhoods in a negative way. Having sixty-plus units tightly packed in the proposed lot size would also come, would also force the community to clo- uh, up closer to the property boundaries, increasing the impact on our homes from both a noise and potential building damage, uh, perspective. The areas they will be building on have significant ledge that will need to be blasted, having many more units much uh, closer to the lot lines increases not only the potential for damage to our property, but also harms the long-term enjoyment of our property. We move to our neighborhood uh, understanding at the time what would and would not be permissible from an ordinance perspective, and we are opposed to granting a variance, uh, that substantially changes that. In addition to the diminished enjoyment of our property should be the variant, um, sorry, in addition to the diminished enjoyment of our property, should the variance be granted, there are other impacts on our neighborhood as well. There'll be an increased traffic and noise, as well as a need for increased services for older residents outside the city center, which is against the spirit of the ordinance itself. Sincerely, Roger and Mary Hebert of twenty-five Hampstead Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire." And I am going to read this one, and you're gonna read this one, and you're gonna read this one. All right, so, "To whom it may concern, I am writing to enter my objection to the variance request for nineteen Tinker Road, calling for the co- construction of an elderly housing project. There are numerous reasons to block this request, surely too many to list, however, I would like to name a few. Safety will be a major concern, as traffic congestion will increase significant, significantly. Also, we have many school buses traveling and bus stop on Tinker Road. An increase in traffic volume could be dangerous to the children standing at these stops. Our property values will decline as we are, as we are a residential community. There is a small fire station nearby, which serves our area. The addition of all these units would most likely require increasing the size of the station itself, as well as adding trucks and personnel. Also, will be, also what will be the impact on the various wildlife in our area. Lastly, the site is in the midst of considerable wetlands. I strongly urge the zoning board to deny this project, as it will be detrimental to our community." Thank you, Kathleen Cronin, five Hampstead Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire.
Okay, and this one, uh, is from Mark Morneau and Deborah Brail, nineteen Hampstead Road. And this is regarding opposition to application for variance, elderly housing development, nineteen Tinker Road. And says, "The applicant has failed to meet the criteria as defined by the town, Merrimack, uh, zoning as represented in his application. Please consider the following. The public interest and spirit of the ordinance is violated by the basic zoning objectives, as this proposal will significantly alter the ca- essential character of the neighborhood. Sixty-nine units will increase the residential neighborhood by two hundred percent. The safety and welfare of the current neighborhood is negatively impacted by the noise and traffic this development will bring. Upon completion to an already congested Tinker Road, the additional hundred thirty-eight residential vehicles, as well as groundskeepers employed by the proposed HOA, will be detrimental and unsafe to the current neighborhood. The applicant's request a variance regarding required lot size and states the density of this development will be approximately point thirty-one acres per unit, and references nearby subdivisions where single-family houses on half-acre lots. This is not a true representation of the residential lot sizes in this neighborhood surrounding this development. Surrounding residential homes have larger lot sizes in comparison to the proposed point three-one lot size. Uh, the above-listed three points would undoubtedly result in diminishing the value and desirability of surrounding properties. The mean average of Merrimack residents is forty-one-point-eight years old, uh, based on county public records, and does not represent a significant need for senior housing in this magnitude to justify a zoning change in a residential-zoned area, however supports the need for residential single-family homes. There is no unnecessary hardship in owning this property. The property does not require special conditions and can be developed in accordance with the residential zoning designate for this property. The property continues to have the implied value under the original zoning requirements which it was purchased. The spirit of the ordinance for elderly housing is intended to support the aging population with accessibility to the se- necessary resources. Granting this variance is not in the best interest of said population, as is significantly out of the radius by four miles. To conclude, this application for variance does not meet the criteria set forth by the town of Merrimack and should be denied."
This letter is from a Realtor, Linda Moreau, real estate advisor and professional stager from EXP Realty. Uh, my assumption is she is not an abutter, but a Realtor with an opinion. March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. My name is Linda Moreau, and I am a licensed Realtor with XP, EXP Realty, serving the Merrimack area and southern New Hampshire. I am writing the letter in response to proposed variance requesting a fifty-five-plus community development at nineteen Tinker Road. I represent the interest of a past client who resides at nineteen Hampstead Road, a home I assisted her in purchasing in twenty-twenty. When my client purchased her home, one of the most attractive features was the peaceful, wooded backyard with no immediate neighbors behind. This privacy and natural landscape played a significant role in her decision to invest in this property. As the developer now seeks to replace the wooded buffer with sixty-nine unit clustered fifty-five-plus development, I feel compelled to prove, to provide a professional opinion on the potential impact of such a cha- change. Market impact overview. Since twenty-twenty, Merrimack has seen steady appreciation in property values. As of early twenty-twenty-five, the average home in Merrimack has increased by roughly ten to fifteen percent. However, the immediate proximity to high-density housing developments can influence buyer perception and potential diminish appeal for future resale, especially when privacy, quiet, and open space are key differentials. While well-executed fifty-five communities can add value to a town and attract downsizing buyers, those benefits tend to apply within the local, the new community itself, rather than directly adjacent properties. Loss of natural views, increased traffic, potential noise, and visual density can all contribute to a diminished sense of peace and space that current owners highly value. Key considerations and concerns. Privacy. The proposed removal of tree buffer could severely alter the setting and desirability of the Hampstead Road properties. Traffic. Even with older residents, a sixty-nine unit community may offer a hundred vehicles, service trucks, and daily's deliveries. This increased activity is a concern. Density. The transition from twenty-two single-family homes as currently zoned to nearly seventy clustered units may dramatically shift the neighborhood character. Resale impact. Homes immediately bordering the development may experience longer market times or lower offers due to perceived loss of tranquility. due to perceived loss of tranquility or aesthetic appeal. Professional opinion. As a real estate professional, I believe the proposed development and its scale and design could negatively impact the marketability and perceived value of homes directly abutting the site, including nineteen Hampstead Road. While housing diversity is necessary and the developer has shown some flexibility, further modifications should be considered to minimize disruption to existing homeowners. Recommendations, if approved, consider the following. Require a permanent landscaped buffer or conservation easement behind existing homes. Ensure full transparency and public access to traffic and environmental impact roads. Again, Linda Moreau, real estate advisor and professional stager, EXP Realty.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sure that there's gonna be some people that wanna speak, and then that's the next step here. If you're going to, per the preamble, if you're an agreeance with what's been read and has been reviewed, you know, you can concur agreement. All comments are directed to the board directly. There's no intera-, you know, you have any, everything is directed this way. I will open it up to anybody that we wanna speak. There's a microphone right there. It should be on. And actually, I'm going to have, why don't you, can you put that sign-on sheet right behind you on the bench, please? There's a, on the bench here is a sign-up sheet. Just make sure that your name and your information's on there. So.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, I'm Dennis Flynn, twenty Dunbarton Drive. I'm just gonna read this off. I'll try to do it quickly 'cause I know we got a long night here, apparently. I am speaking to you this evening to express my opposition to the variance application submitted which seeks to, an exception to the Merrimack elderly housing district zoning ordinance for the property located at nineteen Tinker Road, case number ZBA two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-three. I would first like to address what I feel is misleading information provided in the variance application. The property section erroneously states that, quote, "The density is approximately point zero-point-three-one acres per unit, which is similar in density to nearby subdivisions where single-family houses sit on zero-point-five acre lots," end quote. While it is true that twenty-one point five acres divided by sixty-nine units is equal to approximately zero-point-three-one acres, this calculation does not take into account the stated land set aside for roads, green space, a clubhouse with ample parking, pickleboard courts, and wetlands avoidance. Thus, the actual lot size for each of the sixty-nine units, I believe, will be considerably less than zero-point-three-one acres. Furthermore, the lot sizes within the Castleton Ridge development range from zero-point-three-six-six acres to one-point-three-two-four acres with an average lot size of zero-point-six-three-eight acres. Note that this does not take into consideration the nearly forty acres of common land co-owned by the residents of Castleton Ridge. In addition, there are eight abutters whose property is not located within Castleton Ridge. The lot sizes for those properties range from zero-point-seven-one acres to six-point-two-zero-two acres with an average lot size of two-point-five-seven-nine acres. This discrepancy between lot sizes of what will likely be considerably less than the stated zero-point-three-one acres per unit and the abutter average lot sizes of zero-point-six-three-eight acres and two-point-five-seven-nine acres highlights the fact that this development is indeed not consistent with the current residential character of the surrounding area. Point number two. The variance application states that the proposal does not threaten public safety. This is not true. By my calculations, this development will substantially increase the traffic on Tinker Road and thereby the volume of traffic at the already hazardous intersection of Tinker Road and Continental Boulevard. Continental Boulevard is currently a state road. The state of New Hampshire has recently requested that it become a Merrimack town road. The town response to the state includes information from a traffic survey conducted in twenty-twenty-three. That survey shows that one thousand nine hundred and forty-two vehicles per weekday travel the section of Tinker Road between Camp Sergeant Road and Continental Boulevard. I estimate that the traffic coming in and out of this new development would increase the count by as many as four hundred vehicles per workday, which is over a twenty percent increase in volume. This estimate assumes two vehicles per unit per day coming and going during business hours and one vehicle per unit per day coming and going during off-hours. I believe that the vast majority of this new traffic will be traveling through the intersection of Tinker Road and Continental Boulevard. This increased, this increases the potential for accidents at this hazardous intersection and thus increase the threat to public safety. Point number three. I have read the variance application multiple times, and I am unable to determine what the hardship is to the developer if the variance is denied. The current R-four residential district lot size minimum allows for the construction of roughly twenty-three houses, thereby creating a new neighborhood which does indeed match the character of the surrounding houses. These new houses could be constructed in a manner that makes them elderly-friendly in order to meet the housing need for that demographic. This option would also serve to reduce the additional traffic burden on Tinker Road and the associated risk to public safety at the Continental Boulevard intersection. So without a clear explanation of hardship, I am left to believe that the developer is seeking a variance in order to drastically increase the housing density for the purpose of maximizing profits. Point number four. The variance application states multiple times that, quote, "The property has very limited abutting homes," end quote. This is not correct. There were upwards of forty-four abutters who received a certified letter informing them of this meeting. I believe that this, using this sort of language seeks to diminish the concern of those folks considered not to be affected by this development. Excuse me. As a resident on Dunbarton Drive, I certainly feel that I am affected. Others have presented or will present their views on the precedent that approving this variance would set and the effect it would have on the purpose of the town's zoning and planning process. I agree with those claims and will not restate them here. However, I would like to state that I believe that a variance that allows for the complete elimination of any and all setback and frontage requirements specified within section three dot zero-two Table of Lot and Yard Regulations may be valid for the current, currently-defined elderly zoning district but is not appropriate for lots currently located in residential districts. I believe that approving a variance such as this promotes an ad hoc zoning approach that will lead to many other attempts to allow high-density elderly housing within residential districts. I point to item number five on the agenda tonight, one-seventeen Camp Sergeant LLC, as a clear example of that. In conclusion, I respectfully request that the board consider my responses to some of the misstatements made and vague language used within the variance application. I urge the board to honor the requirements of the elderly housing district and deny this variance. Thank you for your attention to my concerns.
Yes. Hold on a second before you go. We have a question to the community.
I have a question about what would be considered an abutter. He had, he had mentioned the, he lived on Dunbarton, which is not a direct boundary abutter to this. Hampstead is.
So they have common land, so they have, they jointly own some common land that does abut the project. So even though they're across the street, they do have that ownership stake as an abutter.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, next person?
Hi, my name is Max Goddard. I grew up on Dunbarton Drive, and I might be one of the few people in this room who've actually stepped on the land that we're discussing today, quite frequently as a child. I'm sorry to my neighbors whose properties I may have cut through to get there, maybe, but I'm here today to talk about the wetlands that are on this property. The Merrimack Town Master Plan, chapter five point five point one is the biodiversity conservation plan. It provides for the protection of our natural resources, including wetlands and vernal pools. It also includes the protection of large unfragmented areas of land with high-quality plants and wildlife habitats. Below, it provides a map from the New Hampshire Fish and Game Wildlife Action Plan. On that map, the entirety of the area surrounding this plot of land, across the street and continental, but almost entirely surrounding it, is marked on this map in the master plan as the highest-ranked habitat in New Hampshire. There's a second lower classification for the highest-ranked habitat in biological region, but this is the highest-ranked habitat in New Hampshire. And I can tell you, as someone who's frequently stepped all throughout that area, of the many frogs and salamanders that inhabit the wetlands and vernal pools that are throughout the property. The property is not just pockets of wetlands, and that's what wetlands are, is pockets. But frogs and salamanders travel and they move and they gather in these vernal pools, which is crucial for their survival and existence. And the, the fact that this proposal took until the very end for, and then it was actually a question by a board member who brought up the wetlands, shows, I think, the complete disregard for these wetlands and vernal pools. In addition to the specific plan that completely surrounds what they deem as the only significant area of wetlands on the property, although it is not the only area, would severely inhibit the species that live in those areas even if they met whatever boundary around them is set. For all of these reasons, and for my trees, don't do this. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jamie. I live on thirty-five Tinker Road, right across Continental. I was gonna say some of the same things the previous speaker said, 'cause I've also walked around on this parcel of land, and before approving anything on this parcel of land, I would encourage all of you guys to do the same thing. There are a lot more wetlands than that map implies, and the topography of that land is such that the disturbances that will need to be made to make that a livable and drivable development will cause a lot more damage. On top of that, as somebody who lives across the street and has a well and lives in Merrimack, a place where we have some problems with our groundwater, I am personally opposed to this because if there's a great big development there, that's a HOA with a bunch of houses that are hooked up to town water, whatever that road is treated with, it's private, privately maintained. That means snow removal is gonna be handled privately, which means there's very little control over what's applied to that road. All of that ultimately ends up in the groundwater, which means it ends up in my well. So, I'll keep it short, other than to say I agree with the red comments for the general other comments of opposition to this. Thank you.
My name's Kurt Fisher, twenty-one Hampstead Road, and I believe I'm the only Hampstead Road resident that's standing up here today at the mic. I do agree with, all my neighbors have written in their letters and has Dennis so eloquently made his statement, I won't be as eloquent, I can guarantee you that. But I'm gonna speak from the heart with the one major issue that concerns me, and that's gonna be the cavalier attitude that we've had, that I've seen in the presentation by the requestor towards safety. I have six kids. When I chose to buy this property in Hampstead Road twenty-one years ago to raise my family, and my kids, my youngest is seven, and every three years, there's one. So if you just do the, do the math, it's seven, ten, and go up every three years. I'm a family of runners who, who might see my kids running through the neighborhood. They all run. Daughter got a full scholarship for, for running Gatorade Runner of the Year, son the same way, and my other two kids at high school are both on the, on the New Hampshire cross-country All-Stars. So, with that being said, my kids are on these streets all the time, and I'm on these streets all the time. The only way out of Hampstead Road is, is either across Tinker or onto Tinker. And to have a statement say, I mean, we paid more attention to the noise from a pickleball court than we did to the safety of my children. I've, I've heard nothing about the safety of my kids. My kids are on bikes, my kids are running, and I'm out there with my wife. Every day, we walk on Tinker. And, and the impact that this will have to, to my family's safety has to be seriously considered. So I, that is my, that is my paramount message today for you. The other thing that I have not heard in statements is the light pollution. The enjoyment of my property, when I, when I bought it, is the, at night, it's dark. I can see the stars, and it is beautiful. Put sixty-nine homes out the front of my house, I can guarantee you that light pollution is gonna be immense. I'm gonna have light shining in my face, and, and it's gonna diminish the value of my property and my enjoyment of my property. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Donald G. Weiss Esquire. I live at ten Dunbarton Drive. At your request, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of things that other people have said. I did sign one of those letters. I would just like to add on to what my neighbor, Mr. Flynn, said about the size of the development, correct my colleague, the counsel for the applicant. The Castleton Ridge Development, which is Hampstead and Dunbarton, is approximately forty-two homes on eighty-three acres, if I remember the numbers correctly. It is approximately two acres per home. The reason some of the homes were clustered was because of the amount of blasting that was required because of all the ledge in the area, and therefore, the, a lot of the property is the buffer area, as he mentioned. Also, Mr. Dwyer, you mentioned it takes you an extra two or three minutes to get out of your development because of traffic. I'd like to point out, I don't know if you're, how familiar you are with Tinker Road, but it connects to Everett Turnpike at exit eight off North-Southwood Drive, and it has become a constant bypass for the traffic on one-oh-one-A. If you've ever come home at, on one-oh-one-A, you know it could take you a half an hour to get a few miles. So people come down Tinker, okay? I have taken ten minutes to fifteen minutes to get across the intersection of Tinker and Continental because of all the cars coming from Everett Turnpike down Tinker. Continental because of all the cars coming from Everett Turnpike down Tinker. So, adding more cars to that road is adding extra danger to everyone in, in that area. Counsel brought up a study of an typical road, the size of Tinker, in a typical area that doesn't have a connection to the major highway, and used those as, as, to cite the, the numbers. The traffic on Tinker is already way above what counsel has indicated, and this is just gonna add more to that. Finally, the, talking about the, oh, excuse me, two things, talking about the hardship. Okay, this property was purchased as single-family zoned. The buyer knew what they were getting, and there is nothing in a hardship of them having to only build the number of homes on the property that the Town Master Plan planned for this property. They could build 22 or 23 homes, and I fail to see anything that counsel said that, that creates a hardship there. And I apologize, I forgot the last point I was going to make.
It's okay.
Thank you very much for your time, and if I didn't state it, I, as I said, as the letter I signed, I oppose the granting of this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. So anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay. You signed in, no, you can do it.
Hi, Caitlin Burner. I live at 2 Birch Street. I do not live near here, but I did grow up here in this town, and I have seen how much it has grown since I was a kid. I, I agree with everything that everybody has spoken about. I just wanted to bring up that, I know that a lot of our community has expressed that there are a lot of elderly people that are concerned about being priced and taxed out of their houses. This would in, increase our property taxes, and it would also not be helping any of those families, or those parent, or parents, grandparents, or elderly people that are looking to stay in Merrimack. It would be taking them away from Merrimack, because this isn't any cheaper than what the houses they already have, so it's not fitting our community's need. And if the people that purchased this in the first place were aware that they wouldn't be able to have a 55-plus community there, I don't think that it would be making sense for them to be doing it now, and not being aware of our community's concerns that we have. And that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Tammy Schultz. I'm at 17 Hampstead Road. I don't have anything prepared, just kinda winging it, but going off of what other people have said, I concurred with basically everyone else who has made points up here. I agree with all of those points and support them and what they've said. One thing I did want to add is that it was mentioned that there was a need for elderly housing, and that there was, I guess, a study done here in Merrimack stating such, according to the 2013 Comprehensive Plan, I believe. Well, I just looked that up on my phone, and I saw that elderly was considered 65-plus. I didn't really see too much about housing, just that there was an increase in elderly residents. This is a 55-plus community. And I did wanna bring up, there are some of us who did not have our children in our twenties. So, in a few years, I and several people I know could be fitting into that 55-plus community. We still have kids, three or four years left of high school, so there would still be a need for, for buses. Also, I'd like to bring up, there are grandparents who are raising grandchildren, so what would happen if they were living there, bought there with the intent of not having children there, you know, on a full-time basis, and then they had to take their grandkids in or, or lose them? I mean, that's another issue, something to think about, but ultimately, I did wanna bring up, if there's a rule for zoning for elderly housing, and there's a set radius of one mile or two miles on the other side of the highway, I calculated, calculated it roughly today, and it was over four miles from the listed point at DW Highway and Babusick Lake Road. So that puts it over three miles outside of the previously decided elderly housing And if I knew that, or if, I, I should say, if I were buying a house today, and I saw that plan coming, I would not, I would not buy my house today. I would look for the home that I was looking for when I bought it 10 years ago. So, thank you.
Hi, Steve Pippinger, 3 Morningside. I'm about a mile away. I just wanna bring something, a fact to the board. We got this letter from Merrimack Village District about sodium chloride use in the area, especially this being an aquifer zone. We're actually in the wellhead, but also in the aquifer. I would just like to read, take a minute.
Sure.
"To property owner, I'm ready to ask you for help regarding the most critical issue facing Merrimack Village District as it relates to severe rise in sodium chloride levels in our local environment and drinking water. De-icing materials are often used on roads, parking lots, sidewalks, and ever Imperial surface to keep the public safe during the winter months." I'm just gonna pause here. Significant parking in this new development, roads, driveways, we'll call it for 69 units. The most commonly used de-icing agent is sodium chloride, more, more commonly known as road salt. When the road salt is applied to the ground surface, it dissolves into sodium, which travels within the melting snow into the wetlands, streams, and aquifers which provide our drinking water. The Merrimack Village District has been forced to inactivate one of our highest-producing production wells as a result of the contamination due to continued rising levels of sodium chloride in our aquifers. The cost to treat and remove sodium chloride from our drinking water, if required, is prohibitive. Now, I've known we've gone through a lot of filtration lately with our drinking water, so we're probably talking millions of dollars, I would assume, but we can check with MVD. Therefore, it is imperative that we, and we, as an entire town and local community, protect our drinking water and protect our investments for the future. We need to stop these rising trends in sodium chloride by using less salt. Just wanted to bring that up to do with the expansive new driveways, parking lots, and everything goes with the new development."
Thank you. Sure, well, means.
Thank you, Donald Weiss, and I apologize, I, I forgot the point, it was a, a point that my neighbor, Mr. Flynn, brought up, but I, as an attorney, I wanna just reiterate. Mr. Flynn spoke about setting a precedent here. I could tell you, attorneys and courts love precedents. If this board approves this variance and throws out the Merrimack Master Plan to allow the Class R4 zoning to be violated here, any lawyer for any developer in the future who wants to put a, a development in that is not compliant with the zoning, is going to cite this as a precedent. That is, as, as a lawyer, I could tell you, there is nothing better than having a board like this set a precedent, it'll be cited in court guaranteed when any future developers want to fight a decision of this board. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or against this petition? Okay. I'm going to ask if there, counsel, do you have a rebuttal, or are you all set?
I do have a couple things I'd like to point out.
Okay. Can you make sure your mic's on, please?
I'll do it again, sorry.
Thank you. That's okay.
All right, so up on the screen is the tax map for the area. I just wanted to answer the abutter question, because it's sort of counterintuitive. So, if Paige can outline our property here in the middle, so, we have an abutting on Continental, and then the left side, all the way around the back, that's all one parcel. It's commonly owned by the residents of Hampstead and Dunbarnton, but there isn't anyone on that parcel. That is open, common space, right there. And then next to that is, there is a house lot there, and then obviously, there's a house lot right there across the street, and then I think there's a little triangle there, maybe on LeBlanc, that might have something. And then we get back to Continental. So, it is unusual in a situation like this where we would notify all the abutters of Hampstead and Dunbarnton, but the problem we had is that that commonly-owned area, the HOA was never entirely formed, I guess, so normally, you would just notify the HOA, but because there wasn't a HOA to notify, the, the, the solution was to notify everybody because they have a common interest in that parcel, even though they don't live on that parcel. They own that parcel, and as an HOA, or as a community, are entitled to be noticed for that reason. The other thing I want you to do is go back to the concept plan. So, if you look up into the upper right-hand corner, you can see that, that area, that's not that one, but, oh, that's a court. Is that a, somebody's got a tennis court?
Can we?
Yeah, no, I know, there's a house. It just looked to me like there was something else. Okay, but I'm pointing out to the, to the light fields. Can you highlight those? So, that's lighter than all the other area, because there is no, there are no trees there, that's currently a field. So, I'm gonna make sure that you understand, there's no existing buffer in that area between, between us and lot 293-1. That's, they have a small row of trees on their property, but we're just fields on our side.
Okay.
The points that have been raised regarding wetlands, I understand that there are people who may have traversed the property. The plan indicates that the wetlands have been delineated by wetland scientist, Gove Environmental. That is expert evidence before you about, you know, where the wetlands are. The required buffer for those wetlands is 40 feet, and those are met in each area, as Paige pointed out. I think the concern about road salt and other things is well-taken. We see on the, in the seacoast, a lot of effort to reduce salt, and you do it by utilizing some of the research out of UNH, involving, you know, green or Snow Pro-certified contractors to reduce the amount of, or the type of items that are spread on roads. And that is a requirement or a technology that John is familiar with. So that is certainly something that can be looked at in this case. Similarly, the issues around that type of situation and the traffic, those are, there are a lot of issues that have been raised, but most of them are issues that are drilled down in greater detail at the planning board level. If you want to, you know, if you feel like you need additional information, we're happy to take that request and, and come back to you with that information. And I just, is there anything else? And I just wanna consult for one second.
Can I address the board, please, for the point of order?
One minute, please. Just let, let her finish, and I'll let you speak.
I, I was just gonna say, I consulted with a client who would be willing to ask for, would like to ask for a continuance to allow him to discuss all of the comments raised and the board questions with Mr. O'Neill. So I would ask for a continuance, if you would entertain it.
Okay, hold on one second. I'm just gonna let this gentleman make, just, if you, sir, if you wanna make your comment, and then I need to...
I just wanted to, to comment on the statement that was made of no abutters property on Hampstead Road joins that, that common property, and 25 Hampstead Road does Mary Hebert, so that's any correct statement.
Okay, thank you. All right, if you can please hold for a second.
Yes, if the board is looking for more information to help them make a decision, there can be a continuance. I do wanna point out that there is state statute that the board has to make a decision under the 90-day clock, which is up on April 30th, but the applicant can grant the board an extension to that clock if more time is needed. Your next scheduled zoning board meeting is on April 30th, that is the same day as your deadline, so, so that could work if they need more than the month, and it bumps out to the May meeting, you, the applicant would just need to grant you the extension to that statutory clock.
So they are looking, if they're looking for a continuance, then there would be something that we would have to grant if we felt that we needed more information, but we hadn't come to the point where we're asking for a continuance for more information, they're wanting a continuance because they want to address abutter issues.
Yeah, so, so I don't know what kind of information they're looking to supply, so that might be a question to ask them.
So...
I think we'd be looking for some evidence from the board, but whether you want anything or not, client would like...
Can you put your mic on, please? Thank you.
Whether you guys want anything or not, client would like the opportunity to consider the information received today. We got a number of abutter letters this morning and yesterday. We've obviously heard from a number of people, we've heard your questions, so regardless, he would be requesting a continuance to allow him to take that feedback into consideration. And if he were asking for the continuance, that would cover you in terms of having to act within a certain period of time, and if, if Casey needs us to sign something to that effect, we'd be happy to do that. I would be asking, I suppose, if you'd consider, I'd like to poll the board, to see if you're willing, if you would be willing to make a decision at some point with the information you have, or if you think you would need additional information to make a decision at a subsequent meeting.
Does anybody on the board feel that they need additional information to be able to make a decision this evening? Chuck?
No.
Rich?
I'm flat-out against a continuance.
Pardon?
I said, I personally am flat-out against a continuance, because we have, I think, all the information that we need.
Rod?
I'm somewhat interested in a, a traffic survey.
I, I don't need any more information than what's been provided. Casey, best approach from this point?
I, I don't think you have to grant the continuance.
I, I, I think the information's been presented, and I'm in line not to, not to grant the continuance at this time. So, unless there's any further public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll have deliberations on the board.
I would ask them to withdraw.
Okay, ask them to withdraw. Okay, do we need, we don't need to make a vote on that?
Uh, no, there's nothing to vote on, I'm just making it very clear for the record that the applicant has withdrawn.
So, based on the applicant's request, the applicant has withdrawn these variants? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, I'm gonna give everybody just two minutes to let this place clear out a little bit. All right, thank you very much. So, everybody, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump the order a little bit here, because we have a petition that is going into continuance. So let me, so right now, in this, for... So let me, so right now, in this, for everyone here, for the Brian Lawrence petitioner-owner variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a subdivision of a property into two lots, with each lot having 50,600 square feet of front continuous upland, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, each lot having 215 feet of road frontage, whereas 250 feet is required, and with one lot having 223 feet of lot depth and the other having 246 feet, whereas 300 feet is required. The parcel is located at 54 Lawrence Road, R1, in the R1 residential by MAP District, tax MAP 7B lot 13-1, case number ZBA 2025-01. They have asked for a continuance. Casey, if you could read that note in, please?
Yes. This was submitted by a representative of the applicant, Steve Keach. Given lack of a five-member quorum, we opt to continue this, the Brian Lawrence petition to a future date when a full board is available to hear the case.
Will butters be noted to the future date?
No, so the board needs to vote to continue this to the next meeting date, which is April 30th. Because this is being stated in a public meeting, there will be no future abutter notification. So just so it's clear, anyone in the audience that's here for that application on Lawrence Road, it will not be heard tonight and the members are about to make a motion to continue it to their next meeting date on the night of April 30th.
Do I have a motion to continue the petition as read in?
So may.
So may. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Rich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that is 4-0-0. The, that, so anybody is here for the Brian Lawrence petition, it is, that will be heard on April 30th, which will be our next ZBA meeting.
At, at 6:30 PM.
At 6:30 PM. Thank you. Before I, I'm going to go down and I'm going to ask the rest of the petitions here if they want to be heard or continued. So I'm, if I read your petition, well, you just, I, let me go start with Peter McClinic, petitioner and APK Ventures.
I'd like a continuance.
Okay. So... Sorry?
Yep, so read that.
Yep. So, looking for a continuance on Peter McClinic, petitioner and APK, APMK Ventures LLC owner variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a three-unit multifamily building on a lot with 26,136 square feet of land, whereas 120,000 square feet is required, 135 feet of lot depth, whereas 200 feet is required, and 120 feet of road frontage, whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel is located at 332 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial Ocafer Conservation Elderly Housing Overlay District, tax MAP 4D-4, lot 32, case number ZBA 2025-06. This is for continuance. Do I hear in a continuance as read?
I move to continue.
Okay. Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Rod. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 4-0-0, continuance. So the Peter McClinic petitioner and APMK Ventures LLC, that will be heard on April 30th at 6:30 here. Thank you very much. Next, Michael Hanning and John Hayslip. Are you looking to have here tonight or do you want a continuance?
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
If I don't get it, can I be reheard or is it, I don't have it?
If you don't get it, you'd have to file an appeal.
I guess continuance then.
Okay. Michael Hanning, petitioner and John Hayslip, owner, special exception under section 2.02.138D1 to permit a medical office use, physical therapy in the Town Center Overlay District. The parcel is located at 421 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial Ocafer Conservation District, Oca River Conservation Elderly Housing Overlay and Town Center Overlay District, tax MAP 5D-4, lot 91, case number ZBA 2025-07. Do I have a continuance?
I move to continue.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Rod. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, abstained, 4-0-0 for continuance. Michael Hanning and John Hayslip, that'll be April 30th, 6:30 here. 117 Camp Sergeant Road, owner and LLC petitioner, land consultants. Do you want to be heard this evening, continue with your motion?
Yeah, we'd be heard this evening.
Okay. And then Patricia M. Panico in Vicinity Development LLC, are you looking to be heard this evening or do you want to go for a continuance? Are you still here? As there is no answer, I'm going to assume that they are not here or have left.
I, I did get an email that the presenter was sick, but I, I thought the property owner would be here to present, so perhaps they're looking for a continuance as well.
Well, they're not here, so...
I mean, the board can still vote for a continuance.
And if we don't? I'm kidding.
There are butters.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there are butters. So let's, let's let you, let's let you guys get out of here because I'm sure you've been here long enough.
Yeah, but, yeah.
We'll put in, we're going to go with a continuance on Patricia M. Panico, petitioner and Vicinity Development LLC variance under section 3.02, the zoning ordinance to permit a four-unit multifamily building on a lot having approximately 9,583 square feet of land, whereas 600,000, 160,000 square feet is required and less than 200 feet of lot depth, whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel is located at 5 Depot Street in the R4 residential by soils and Ocafer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax MAP 6E-1, lot 17, case number ZBA 2025-09. Continuance as, do I have your motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I happen to be in a butter to that petitioner and I would have to recuse myself from voting.
So that would just, that would be the three of us then?
But that's okay.
I make a motion that we continue.
Motion to continue. Second. Second, okay. Motion made by Rod, seconded by Rich. You'll just abstain on this vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed and abstaining would be Chuck. So it is 3-0-1.
Would it be okay if I just summarize everything so everyone in the audience is very clear on what just happened?
Please, by all means.
I apologize, I know that happened very quickly. I'm just going to read off the four cases, the, the addresses, so it's very clear what just got continued. So if you are here tonight as an abutter for 332 Daniel Webster Highway, 421 Daniel Webster Highway, 54 Lawrence Road, or 5 Depot Street, all four of those cases are being continued to the next zoning board meeting on April 30th. Is there anyone here that has confusion on what was continued? Just raise your hand if you, if you have any confusion on what just happened. So, so the only case left tonight is for 117 Camp Sergeant Road, so that is the only case left for tonight that is being heard.
So your other cases, the, all the other cases will be continued April 30th, 6:30 here. Okay. So...
And there'll be no reminders sent to the abutters, correct?
There will be no reminders to the butters.
Yeah, there'll be no more abutter notification going out in the mail unless you're still here for the Tinker Road project.
All right. So 117 Camp Sergeant, owner LLC and Fieldstone Land Consultants, PL, PPLC petitioner, variance under 2.01.7 to permit an elderly housing development beyond the required radius from the intersection of Daniel Webster Highway and Babusick Lake Road. This parcel is located at 117 Camp Sergeant Road in the R1 residential by soils and Oca River Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax MAP 3C, lot 37, case number ZBA 2025-08.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dan Barowski. I'm with Fieldstone Land Consultants and I'm not quite as eloquent as the attorney. I'm a surveyor, so I'm going to read from my application a little more.
That sounds good.
So similar to another case you might have heard recently, a variance is requested under section 2.01.7 of the Merrimack zoning ordinance to permit an elderly housing development outside of the boundaries of the elderly overlay zoning district. Tax map parcel 3C 37 is situated west of the Everett Turnpike and approximately 3.5 miles from the intersection of DW Highway and Babusick Lake Road. This parcel is five acres per the assessor's card and has 244 feet of frontage along Camp Sergeant Road. The proposed elderly housing development will meet all of the other applicable zoning requirements. We are asking relief only for the location of the development in town. The site is already serviced by municipal water and has the ability to tie into the municipal sewer system. The existing lot is currently developed with a single-family residential home that exists in the R1 by soils district. The site has adequate area, frontage, and available utilities to facilitate up to 40 units. Our client is currently proposing a 32-unit development consisting of single and duplex buildings and a private access road. So to go through the, unless there are any initial questions?
Go through the five variances.
Yep, go through the five criteria.
Five criteria, thank you, yep.
Granted, the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the Supreme Court has held that the variance is contrary to the public interest when it threatens public health, safety, or welfare. We believe granting this use variance will not threaten these, nor will it otherwise injure public rights. We believe the town of Merrimack has changed since designated the boundaries of the elderly zoning district. The need for affordable housing has continued to grow and utilizing this site for additional housing will be a benefit to the town. Allowing an elderly housing development on lot 3C 37 will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The subject parcel is much larger than surrounding parcels and is insulated by an abutting developments landscape buffer. The development will not create any health or safety problems and will provide additional affordable housing. Since the proposal will provide the above while resulting in no negative impacts to the public, we believe granting this variance would not be contrary to the public interest.
Any questions on the board? Okay.
All right. The spirit of the ordinance, the spirit of the ordinance is tied to criteria one as it's in the public's interest to uphold the spirit of the ordinance. Since, according to the master plan, people age 65 and up is the fastest growing segment of the population in town and has been increasing significantly for over 20 years. The shift in demographics directly affects the type of housing that is needed in Merrimack. It is a goal of the master plan to ensure that the housing choices are available to meet the needs of the current and future generations. The master plan is a tool used to shape the ordinance. It can be inferred from the goals of the master plan that the spirit of the ordinance is to allow for more elderly housing development opportunities. Since this proposal will achieve the above goal without negative impacts to, to the town, we believe it follows the spirit of the ordinance.
Questions on the board? Okay.
All right. Granted, this variance would do substantial justice because granting this variance would allow for the productive use of a large existing five-acre lot and provide additional needed elderly housing. Granted, this variance would do substantial justice because it would provide responsible growth in the community without negative impacts to the town. Denial of this variance request would result in no apparent gain to the general public. However, the property owner would be harmed as the use of his property would be greatly constrained. We believe the current proposal is a reasonable use of the land.
Any questions?
Granted, the variance would not diminish the surrounding property values. The proposed elderly development will not detract from the existing residential uses of abutting properties. It has been our experience that new construction and development will increase the value of surrounding properties. As a result, we would expect this project to have a positive impact on surrounding property values.
Unnecessary hardship?
Unnecessary hardship. Owning to special conditions of the property, the elderly housing, or the elderly zoning district is established in the ordinance to encourage the construction of housing for older persons, and there are not many parcels left in the elderly zoning district that meet the criteria for elderly housing developments. We believe this district was created to allow for community-like developments that cater to the unique needs and lifestyles of older persons. This particular parcel has access to a long-stretching off-site pedestrian path, as mentioned, and as mentioned above, a but, a 100-foot landscaping buffer that provides added seclusion, which will contribute to the community feel. The availability of municipal sewer and water to the site also make it uniquely suited for this type of use. We believe the general public purpose of the ordinance provision is to allow for such developments in town without detracting from the single-family residential use much of the town enjoys. Based on the above, we do not believe that a fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application that provision, of that provision to the property. And the proposed use is reasonable one because we believe that the proposed elderly housing development is reasonable because it would be an allowed use if the property were located closer to the DW Highway and Babusick Lake Road intersection. The property otherwise has all of the requisite frontage, area, and utilities to facilitate this development. Because the unique features of the property noted above, we believe granting this use variance is reasonable. And owing to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance and a variance is therefore necessary. There are several factors that make this property unique and well-suited for an elderly housing development. It has access to municipal sewer and water services, it has adequate area and frontage, it abuts a long pedestrian path that stretches from Cambridge Drive to Tinker Road, it abuts an existing landscape buffer on two sides. Without the variance, the lot will be underutilized. By area, it is over twice the required size for R1 zone and over five times the size required for R4 zone. However, the lot's lack of frontage impedes it from being conventionally subdivided, so a variance is therefore necessary. The master plan addresses the need for elderly housing developments in town and we believe this lot is a great candidate to fill that need and can create affordable housing.
All right. Any questions on the board? Go ahead, Chuck.
Mr. Chairman, could I, this is important...
Yes, sir.
This is important testimony from the public and the applicant. Could I possibly request a five-minute recess?
Nature calls.
Nature calls.
Um, excuse me, we're just going to do a, we've been sitting here for a while. Five-minute recess for everybody. Five minutes. All right, and we're back. Thank you. Uh, thank you for reading in the criteria. Do, uh... Uh, thank you for reading in the criteria. Do, uh, what questions did the board have before I open the public? I know I have a couple of things I want to ask, but I will open it to you guys first. Chuck?
I have all the information I need.
Alright, Rich?
Um, so just out of curiosity, what do these units look like?
Uh, these units will be, what is it, roughly twelve hundred to fifteen hundred square feet?
Yeah, twelve to fifteen hundred square feet. Uh, I think a lot different from the rendering. We have, I mean, ours is truly like a two-bedroom unit, true fifty-five plus. Uh, there's no room for grandkids and, and all of that kind of stuff in our units, single-car garage.
Okay, so you got that too, right? Two thousand seem like a pretty big for, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, no, I mean, ours are truly like a fifty-five plus, you know, elderly, uh, you know, couple with a, you know, obviously, we don't, we don't want to discourage, uh, use of an extra bedroom for people to visit. I mean, that's, that's kinda what you have that for.
Right.
Or an office or whatever you want to use it for, but they're fifteen hundred square feet, single-car garage type units.
Okay.
That, that actually was all I was curious about.
Five acres, thirty-two units, that's, that's a lot.
I mean, that, that's, that's a lot for five acres. I mean, the other place, I mean, granted, was sixty-nine units, and that was, that's a much bigger piece of land, but five acres, that's for thirty-two units, even two-bedroom units with one-car garage? I mean.
So this is a, um, it's a concept, obviously hasn't been engineered out yet. And, uh, we would kinda anticipate going through the finer details like that of, you know, through the planning board process. I guess we would be looking for maybe an up to thirty-two unit, um, approval. Where we, we understand that, you know, there might be some, uh, some change in, in what the concept looks like through both the butter comment, through engineering challenges, um, once we, you know, start really digging into the actual, uh, design of this. But this is obviously the first step in a long process of securing the ability to have the use on the property.
So, I mean, I'm just gonna come out and say it's because we just sat here for two hours and listened to one of these. I mean, eh, given the fact, I mean, you're kinda looking for the same type of leeway, um, as far as being able to build outside the elderly, um, overlay. I, I. Five acres, thirty-two, up to thirty-two properties, eh, for me, it's a little hard to, well, one, it's a little hard to say that something like this would be, I mean, from outside the elderly, um, is something that I, I'm on board with. But two, the fact that you don't necessarily, you're saying, this is a concept plan, and it could be something else, or it could be, I, I personally have a hard time just, and, and I've always had, you know, in the fifteen years I've been on ZBI, I've always had a, found it difficult to ever go out, approve anything that is like, well, this is a concept. This means it could turn into a bunch of different things once it goes to planning, and that's, that's one of those things that.
I, I didn't mean, I didn't mean that to say this could totally change. We obviously put forward the, the most accurate concept that we, um, you know, what we anticipate to, uh, hope to build. But it's certainly not set in stone, you know, were some of those units to, to not be built, that wouldn't be, you know.
So if it became a ten-unit, if it became a ten-unit property, that's, that, that's, that's a possibility for it? If, if planning was to, to look at it from that perspective, or, um, if there was enough, uh, a butter concern about, uh, thirty-two units on five acres?
If, if planning did, if, if we were restricted somehow, I, I mean, obviously, I can't promise you that it would get built if it was approved for ten units, but, I mean, um.
I'm just throwing that out, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rod?
I'm, I'm looking for the network, I got a question, I'm just trying to look for my backup question. I don't think your mic was on. I'm sure the paperwork's here, but it's all blended in with all the other things we just shuffled around.
Mike, Mike.
Are any of these kinda like duplexes? Are they all individual homes? As Patrick was saying, it's a lot of homes in that.
Most of them are duplexes. I believe there are two, um, single units, and the, um, other fifteen buildings are duplexes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Um, I have a couple of letters to read in, um, to the record, so. Uh, to the atten, uh, Attention Zoning Board of Adjustment, uh, one seventeen Camp Sergeant Owner, LLC and Fieldstone Land Consultants, PPLC petitioner, request to change zoning on parcel three C dash three seven from residential zoning to elderly housing, which would have thirty-two households, fifteen duplexes to single units. Summary, this is from Suzanne Cole, thirty-one Cambridge Drive in Merrimack, New Hampshire. The variance against parcel three C dash thirty-seven to change from residential zoning to elderly housing does not meet the criteria to pass this variance. The variance does not meet the public interest and will change the entire look, feel, um, entire look, feel of the in, single-family residential zone with minimum lot sizes setbacks, et cetera, to fifteen duplexes and two single units on a five-acre plot, thus increasing the density by thirty-two times. The plot, under consideration, does not have direct road access nor road frontage on an access road. The plot has forty-plus feet elevation increase from a plot boundary to highest point where houses will be built. The elevations are, are, can present challenging driving conditions to the elderly and severe safety concerns during snow, ice. Parcel three C dash thirty-seven is designated well-hit protection area in the road. Salt is not allowed and does not serve the intent or justice, uh, for the elderly residents. Uh, the hardship, uh, hardships for this variance are self-imposed by this variance. Going forward with the variance, more hardships will occur, given the extra town support services for a small dense area of elderly units. We, my husband Don, Co., and I bought our house at thirty-one Cambridge Drive, parcel, uh, number three C dash three eight dash fifteen in Weathersfield, Cambridge Drive, and Aldrich Circle, totaling forty-one houses twenty-six plus years ago due to attractive houses, larger lot sizes, great location, limited number of houses, the surrounding forest, Wasserman Park sidewalks, and the planned walking path on Continental Boulevard that led to the Camp Sergeant sidewalk. When we bought the property, the adjacent neighborhoods were mature and all had single-family residence. The exception being parcels twenty-two C dash one one two and two C dash one one two dash oh one, which were both built on three-plus acre lots on Camp Sergeant on the other side of the street from the petitioner property. There was no concern of any large changes to the area, given the established area. Uh, this neighborhood is quiet and peaceful, there's no noise or light pollution. Uh, it is a sa, very safe location and little traffic. Cambridge Drive, Aldrich Circle, Ingram Road, Morningside Ave, and part of Camp Sergeant Road are single-family neighborhoods, and for the purpose of this letter reference, there is a community, no legal implications apply. We had, love this area. I have walked these neighborhoods for over twenty-six years. From the walking path on Continental Boulevard across the street is Fidelity with four hundred sixty-six acres. All of this is visible, all of this, all of that is visible, uh, trees on both sides of Continental Boulevard. Walking path is long, uh, walking down towards Cambridge Drive. Down Camp Sergeant Road is Thornton Ferry Road and YMCA Camp, both are heavily forested. Attached below is a map depicting the trees, general field, the residential zone of this community and surrounding area, including Fidelity Woods, Thornton Ferry School, and YMCA Nashua. Um, I also, so then close that, and close them up. The proposed variance changes with, changes the one-family zoned ordinance to having thirty-two elderly families housing, fifteen duplexes and two single units on a five-acre lot and eight buildings to an acre. On a hill is a direct conflict with the well-established community and overall character, including con, uh, current parcel values. Parcel three C dash three seven property, per the town mapping tool, okay, does not directly intersect with any road depicted. Um, elderly zoning regulations require elderly housing have a hundred feet of frontage on a road, major road, and this property does not meet either the frontage or connection to a major road requirements. The proposed variance depiction, um, shows that the plan is to double the size of the driveway, which will cover more of the walking path. The walking path that passes by this property has only two driveways from the intersection of Ingram Drive, Camp Sergeant, to the intersection of Cambridge Drive and Continental Boulevard. It makes it a safe place for people, families, and children to walk and ride their bikes. Having thirty-two plus traffic, uh, increase over a wider intersection of a path is a safety concern for all people who use this path. The proposed entrance may, uh, way expansion will signi, significantly increase traffic by thirty-two X and less space from the conjun, from the junction of Camp Sergeant Road and Continental Boulevard intersection than currently. This, uh, increased density for the residents creates safety hazard exiting and entering from the proposed elderly housing site, especially during peak work and school times. The number of household residents and required services would generate a minimum of thirty-two times more traffic to an area that currently supports just one household. The driveway to the petitioner's property has very deep drainage ditches with streams depicted. Uh, there's a massive difference of one family crossing this road versus thirty-two families and the service emergency support maintenance coming out of this property, and this would be a structural element that needs to be taken into account. The proposed entrance way would, uh, be closer to Camp Sergeant Continental Boulevard, creating safety hazard exiting, entering from the proposed elderly housing site, especially during peak work and school times. The number of household residents and required services would generate a minimum of thirty-two times more traffic to a small area that currently supports just one household. Uh, parcel thirty-three, three C dash thirty-seven elevation from the property line goes from two hundred twenty feet to two hundred sixty-two feet at the highest point. From the property line to the top of the driveway at the current residence, it is approximately two hundred thirty-two feet long and twenty-eight feet elevation, uh, which roughly gives the driveway a twelve percent grade. The proposed road does curve some, but the highest elevation for elderly housing is planned at two hundred sixty-two feet, which is forty-two feet elevation increase from the property boundary. Additionally, this property falls within the well-hit protection depicted. Uh, the property, these protected are prohibited use of road salt. Building dense elderly housing on a more than zero-grade road has concerns for elderly driving on the, uh, on that road. Given the snow and ice conditions, then it is a safety concern for all elderly families and for emergency services and service providers servicing this area that is proposed dense area. If the plan is to blast the entire site flat, then this eliminates the elevation concern. The natural gas pipeline runs close by the property line. Uh, if blasting is required, then the nu, then is required, then that is another disturbance to the protected area and care need to be maintained not to disturb the pipeline. If the area is blasted flat, road salt still will not be permitted, thus still risking elderly families falling on the property. Parcel thirty-three C dash thirty-six, the next door neighbor to the abutter has a large wetland area. Uh, would experience additional water runoff, uh, and possible water damage issues. The water-snow runoff amounts from this proposed variance will also affect the existing roadways, drainage, dishes, ditches, and wetlands. Unclear whether the existing structures are able to support the extra drainage or whether they need additional infrastructure need to be complete, more burdens, uh, and costs for someone to bear and possibly maintain. The height of the proposed elderly house will also make this proposed development hard to blend in with the surrounding features. The butter three, thirty, three C dash thirty-six will have a lot more traffic passing next door, and the car lights and noise will directly affect many of the abutters. A butter three, thirty, three C dash thirty-six property backyard wooded view will be replaced by building and, uh, blacktop. The direct abutters will have more noise and light pollution, given the thirty-two times family density with this proposed variance. The outside required lighting for the elderly housing regulations and the extra noise with thirty-two times more cars, elderly support services, emergency services, et cetera. The abutters all have a large parcel lot and building value per the tax assessment database. While I do not have time to find out someone could help with the property values would be affected, it would seem highly likely that the abutter, uh, three C dash thirty-six property would be less desirable and expect other butter values will be negatively affected by this variance. The variance on one seventeen Camp Sergeant Road to change it to an elderly housing complex does not meet the criteria to make it pass. We respectfully urge the board to protect our neighborhood's, uh, character and safety and prevent unnecessary additional hardships by denying the variance. Sincerely, Suzanne Coy. There's more.
Want me to do the next one?
I got, maybe, hold on. Let me see how far I get. Uh, next one is from Castle Killaron. I don't know if I said that right. April Lynn Killaron, Killaron. Um, dear zoning board of adjustment, I am writing an objection to the variance application from the owner and developer of one seventeen Camp Sergeant Road. I am unsure if I will be able to attend the meeting in time for the scheduled portion regarding this application, so I'm writing this letter to document my objection. The proposed, um, design is not in scale with the existing homes along the stretches of Cambridge Drive and Camp Sergeant Road, where current residents reside and additional reasons are listed below. The original homes, uh, the original homes need this wooded area to provide privacy and sound protection. While there appears to be, uh, a lot of wooded area in the winter months, the lack of leaves makes it possible to see current residences through the wooded area. Trying to squeeze more dwellings in the small area would not harm the, would not only harm the wildlife who call it home, but it would make the neighbor feel like an urban area instead of a peaceful wooded setting it currently has. Additionally, the increased traffic would greatly impact, uh, the safety and walkability of the neighborhood. This neighborhood greatly values the slower traffic to ensure safety of the children, pets, and families who exercise walk throughout the neighborhood. Increased traffic would negatively affect the lives. Since the pandemic, many residents have moved to their homes to work. Years of construction noise and interruptions in utilities would make their working arrangements impossible. Residents livelihoods would be negatively impacted by a development in this area. Why would someone want to disrupt the delicate balance of families' incomes? Question mark. In conclusion, I highly object to the requested variance. I am sure the majority of my neighbors would say the same. We love our neighborhood, and we do not want it to change in a negative way. We enjoy the trees, wildlife, and ambience the wooded area provides. Please do not permit this beautiful area to be taken from us. We have lost, uh, enough in the past five years. We do not want those to lose their beloved home too. Thank you for your time, April Lynn Killaron, Killaran. Sorry if I mutilated your name, April. Uh, to the Merrimack zoning board of adjustments, thank you for reading this on behalf. I, as I'm attending the cavalcade of bands at the Merrimack High School with my two sons, and unfortunately cannot be present at the meeting. My family has proudly lived in Merrimack for over sixteen years. Drawn here by the town's thoughtful balance of growth and its commitment to preserving green spaces and walking trails, the visual sustainable, uh, development is what makes Merrimack community a treasure. I write to express my strong opposition to the proposed development of five acres for elderly housing adjacent to our neighborhood. This plan raises several concerns that I believe are detrimental to the environment, uh, environmental property values and community safety, environmental impact. Their areas, the area in question is near an aquifer conservation district and well-hit protection area. Development would introduce significant risks to these sensitive environmental zones. Runoff from the pavement, including winter salting poses, uh, threat to water quality. We have reached out to NHDES to further explore those implications. Merrimack has fought hard over the recent years to ensure public water supply is protected from contaminants. I urge the board to prioritize Merrimack's longstanding commitment to clean water initiatives to reject this variance. Impact on property values during the construction of Merrimack outlets, my family experienced home vibrations and observed sizable cracks in our foundation due to blasting. The current site is situated on a non-gated slope, which raises concerns about similar structural damage if development proceeds. Additionally, our home, once overlooked, the quiet wooded area would lose its natural view and be directly exposed to the housing complex. Such changes will undoubtedly diminish the value of the surrounding properties, a significant consequence for residents who have invested in this community. Safety concerns, the proposed intersection of Camp Sergeant Road and the development's entrances raises safety, serious safety concerns. The Continental Boulevard is known for drivers exceeding speed limits, and the right turn onto Camp Sergeant is positioned too close to the entrance of this proposed, proposed site. Without a traffic light, vehicles turning left from the development onto Camp Sergeant would face hazardous conditions, particularly during school hours when buses, elementary school-aged pedestrians, and parents are actively commuting. I recommend a thorough safety study to be conducted to address the risk before any approval is considered. In conclusion, this proposal contradicts the public interest, fails to uphold the spirit of the Merrimack zoning ordinance, and risks harm to the town's sea, town's water quality, property values, and road safety. For those reasons, I believe approving the variance is not the community's best interest. Thank you for your attention. To my concerns, I deeply value being a resident of Merrimack and urge the board to protect the principles that define the community, safeguarding our clean water initiatives, ensuring safe roadways, and fostering reasonable development that will not negatively impact our current property values. I welcome further discussions to preserve what makes Merrimack a desirable place to live. Sincerely, Andrew and Carol LeBert of six Cambridge Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire. Dear members of the Merrimack zoning board of adjustment, we are willing to express strong. Dear members of the New Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment, we are willing to express strong imposition to the proposed variance for the construction of a senior housing within a neighborhood located in the Aquifer Conservation District and wellhe- wellhead protection area. While we appreciate the importance of providing housing for seniors, the development poses significant risks and concerns that must carefully consider. Our opposition is based on the following five critical points. A, variance will not be, will be contrary to public interest. The primary per- purpose of the Aquifer Conservation District in the wellhead protection area is to safeguard the community's drinking water supply. Allowing a large-scale housing development in this sensitive area threatens to increase groundwater contamination. Risks due to higher impervious uh surface runoff, increased use of fertilizers and chemicals and greater wasteland discharge. Protecting our water resources is essential to the health and safety of the current and future residents and the proposed variance directly conflicts to with this public interest. Uh next one, B, spirit of the ordinance is not observed. The zoning ordinance in place where designed to limit development in environmentally sensitive areas for a reason, granting this variance undermines the intent of these regulations, which is to maintain the integrity of critical natural resources. By bypassing these protections, we set a concerning precedent that could encourage further encroachments into protected zones, ultimately compromising the environmental safeguards of our community and uh community depends on. Substantial justice is not done. Balancing the benefits of burdens of zoning decision is crucial in this case. The potential benefit to a limited number of individuals does not justify the significant risks and burdens imposed on the bor- broader community. Sa- water safety, increased traffic, noise pollution and strain on local infrastructure are burdens that will be disproportionately affect um current residents. Substantial justice is not achieved when the well being of many is sacrificed for the interest of few. Values of surrounding properties n- will be diminished. Real estate values are closely tied to environmental quality and neighborhood character. The introduction of a high-density housing complex in a low-density residential area is likely to alter the neighborhood's character significantly, increasing traffic congestion and potential uh water quality concerns could lead to diminished property values. As potential buyers may be deterred by these issues, studies have shown that environmental degreg- degradation and overdevelopment often negatively impact property uh desirability and market values. Literal enforcement of the ordinance would not result in unnecessary hardship for a variance to be justified. There must be evidence of an unnecessary hardship resulting from literally enforcement of the ordinance. In this case, the land in question can still serve as its intended purpose under current zoning laws such as low-impact development or conserv- conservation use. The desire for a more prof- profitable and intensive use of the property does not constitute a hardship. The ordinance was created to protect critical resources and adhere to its ensuring long-term community welfare. In conclusion, approving this variance would compromise the health, safety and environmental integrity of the neighborhood. I urge the Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment to prioritize the protection of our water resources and to uphold the zoning ordinance designed to safeguard our community. Thank you for your consideration. Tiffany and James Greer, five Cambridge Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I have one more to read and it is very long. Um is there any way that I can sum- just summarize this, Casey?
Um I so flipping through it, I do know that some of these pages are simply um exhibits, so it's not nearly as long as it looks. Uh most of this letter is attachments.
Okay, I see.
So the letter itself is only one, two, three.
Well.
It's three pages, so lengthy, but not as lengthy as it looks.
Let me read in the last one. Board, dear board members, we are writing in opposition to the request for a variance in the above referenced matter. We believe granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest and to the spirit of the ordinance, New Hampshire Stat six seven four di- uh colon thirty-three I A two for the reason the zoning border, zoning adjustment uh board uh should deny the variance. Background, the town of Merrimack's current zoning ordinance and building code was revised in two thousand sixteen. It designated to promote the health, safety and convenience and general welfare of the town of Merrimack. As relevant here, the co- the code provides for a solitary elderly zoning district that shall be located with uh a one-mile radius from the intersection of Daniel Webster Highway and Babusak Lake Road. The board is authorized by statute to permit the variance from the code only if the applicant for the variance can satisfy, satisfy five elements. The variance must not be contrary to public interest, the spirit of the zoning ordinance, substantial justice, value of surrounding properties shall not be diminished and literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance may result in unnecessary hardship. Granting so, starting with granting the variance is contrary to public interest. Granting a variance must not be contrary to the public interest. A requirement that is related to the requirement that the variance be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Uh Malachi Glenn nine twenty eight point D at one oh five. To be contrary to the entrance, the variance must unduly and in marked degree conflict with the ordinance, so it's violate, uh so to violate the ordinance's basic zoning ordinances. The code plainly limits the reach of this elderly zoning district to a cir- sunk s- circumference area near the intersection of Daniel Webster Highway and Babusak Lake Road. Indeed, at its broadest, the code extends the district only two miles from the same on the east of the turnpike. The area within one mile of Daniel Webster Highway and Babusak Lake Road is close proximity to the services and facilities that would be most utilized to by the, by those residing in elder- elderly zoning district. This includes, for example, Town Hall, Merrimack Public Library, the John O'Leary Adult Community Center, the Merrimack Police Department and the Merrimack Fire Department, the American Legion and the US Post Office. Hence, the spirit of the ordinance seems to place the elderly zoning district in close proximity to needed services, thus furthers the public interest of making Merrimack an attractive place to live. The request for variance allow an elderly zoning district in an area presently zoned for residential use, but which is far afield from many of the services and facilities described above. Indeed, contrary to the spirit of the ordinance and public interest, the requested variance would place an elderly housing development within one mile of an elementary school, a youth summer camp, a recreational facilities and a corporate megaplex. That is presently the town's largest employer. That would be fidelity for those who did not know. Of course, it goes without saying that requested variance would necessarily result in increased vehicular traffic in and around the area of Continental Boulevard and Camp Sergeant Road. This too is contrary to public interest. Uh duh duh, the board can properly rely on its knowledge of the area resulting from its familiarity there within to support the conclusion that a variance would lead to increased traffic and traffic patterns. Indeed, even if the, an application were to present contrary to expert evidence, the board may reject the methodology or conclusions of the traffics of the experts' traffic assessments, so long as it does not do based on its members' subjective personal feelings and vague unsupportive conclusions. Here, the board need not rely on subjective personal feelings. Rather, the board's personal experience, no doubt, confirms that presently Camp Sergeant Road handles a high volume of traffic during the school year, especially during pickup and drop-off times at Thornton Ferry School. Additionally, during the summer, traffic often extends in both directions on Camp Sergeant Road during pickup and pickup and drop-off times at Camp Sergeant and events at Veterans Memorial Park. As for Continental Boulevard, there's a far more objective basis to deny the variance than even personal familiarity, which again would be sufficient. In February twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four memorandum, Department of New uh Public Works Director Dawn Tumala wrote Continental Boulevard is a major commuter route for the state highway systems between NH uh Route one oh one A and the FE Everett Turnpike. In two twenty twenty-four, the road saw some fi- fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand weekday traffic uh at four. At the time, uh with the then existing traffic conditions, it was estimated that paving the section of Continental Boulevard extension from nor- from one oh one A to Industrial Drive, which included Camp Sergeant Road signaled intersection in twenty twenty-five would cost one point eight five million dollars. And it was further estimated that the road uh would require repaving every eight years. The upshot of this was clear to maintain this, to maintain just the section of the highway would prohibit any other roads in Merrimack from being taken care of in a, in a timely manner. Uh of course, the paving costs just were just one expense detailed in the memo related to upkeep of Continental Boulevard. The anticipated costs for maintenance of Continental Boulevard road were substantial for then existing traffic conditions. The proposed variance would only further increase these costs and tax the town's resources by creating thirty-two sen- senior housing units. The most direct point of access to these roads would be Continental Boulevard. The increased strain this would place on the road would require increased paving and maintenance at a level that will prohibit any other roads in Merrimack from being taken care of in a timely manner. Um based on the memo, uh there is, there, that is not the public interest and runs con- uh counter to spirit and objective of the ordinance to center uh an ordinance to center the elderly housing district near far less traveled roadway and near necessary amenities. Conclusion, this, we are not uh unmindful of many benefits of elderly housing, but granting the variance in this instance would be contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance. Uh for the least reasons stated above, we respectfully request that the parent, the board denies the variance. And this was written by Timothy Bolin for Cambridge Drive and Catherine Bolin of the same address. I will now, after having read all of that, um I will now, there's a microphone up there, there's a clipboard. I, you can, you guys can put it on the bench right behind you. If you are going to speak, I need you to sign the clipboard and then you can stand up, state your name and address and tell us what you think. Alright, who wants to go first? Alright.
Alright, good evening. I'm Sean Smith. I'm at one nineteen Camp Sergeant Road. So I am to the south of this property. This property is directly to my north. It sandwiches the uh this property between Cambridge Drive and, and myself. So I thought I would, uh I'm gonna try not to belabor the points that have already been made. I'm on board with everything that's been said in regards to safety, traffic, uh high density. Those are all similar concerns. Uh, streetlights, the light population, li- populate, uh light pollution. Uh so currently I look out my back window to the north and all I see is trees. And in the summertime, I don't see a single house in any direction. If this variance is allowed and these properties are put in there, I will be looking at no less than four houses directly thirty feet behind my house. So I'll be looking through the back window, I don't know, like, and twenty-eight other houses further down. So that is a change for me in peaceful enjoyment of my property. Um so as far as public interest not being affected, being part of the public. Hearing so far only opposition by the public to said variances, uh this one in particular at the moment. Um I, I believe that it is negative to public interest. Points were made about close proximity to the intersection. I'm right on board, ditto. I don't know how that works out from trying to make left-hand turns into the intersection. It creates a vehicle pedestrian interface at the walkway that with people uh have noticed that uh is part of the enjoyment of that area. So there's a, a sidewalk there. It gets a lot of use. This has become potentially a busy intersection. If there's thirty-two homes, two bedrooms, thirty to sixty, maybe fifty cars coming and going, uh in a place where now there's only a couple. The elementary school, a couple hundred yards away, we're pickup and drop-off. Cars are on the shoulder down there. We're gonna add thirty to fifty cars coming and going. Concerns there, same with Veterans Park that was already mentioned in one of the letters. Um claims that the elderly housing development will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Again, this gets back to the, to the density of the of the development. Uh the lights, the least traffic, hence why the variance is being asked for. Um there's claims that there is a landscape buffer to the abutters. Of course, not all of abutters, not me, not to the west or the south. Will have houses thirty feet from our houses. So reduce pri- uh reduce privacy. Um an interesting term that keeps coming up is, is claims of affordable housing. I, I don't know what that means in this context. Are these houses in these variances gonna be sold at a discount to market rate? Or are they tiny homes? Like, how do you get the price down? Is it, you know, I, I don't understand how that works. I imagine they'd be going for five, six hundred thousand dollars. That's what they go for in Hudson, right? Uh from the application, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the claim is that harm to the property owner due to constrained use of the land. Well, I disagree in that there is a home on the property now, so it's not like it's unusable. It's just that you're not able to maximize the potential return on investment, right? This is, this is about, these are developers, they develop property to make money. This is less about elderly housing and it's about making money. That's what they do. So that's, that's their job and our job is to protect the community. Uh the unnecessary hardship, uh the claim that elderly housing district was created to allow for community-like developments that cater to the unique needs and lifestyles of older persons. Uh this is addressed in the variance uh application there, that, that there's a pedestrian path, a hundred-foot landscape buffer, municipal sewer and water. I'm not sure how that relates specifically to elderly housing. Uh when it's completely removed from the center location where all the services are, which was the intent, in my opinion. Post office, grocery stores, all those amenities. Last page. Um I don't know if we understand um by allowing these variances or potentially allowing these variances for cluster developments, the impacts and this was stated previously uh in the other variance here, emergency responders, you know, we're gonna have to, these are, these are like shocks to the growth rate, right? Go from thirty-two homes, sixty-nine, that's a hundred homes in a mile radius right there. Sewer capacity, water capacity, right? We're on water shortages every year in Merrimack. And if we're, growth rate is a step function in growing, how, how do we keep up with uh that from a water supply sewer? Um and last point. The precedent that the uh public uh mentioned earlier, there was an attorney that, that spoke to that, the precedent that's set by this, I don't know if, if, if having these developers requesting variances for an elderly housing district that is apparently overbuilt and no longer able to build out, is this a a larger master plan growth issue where they review and, and set aside um properties in an area that has the services that the elderly are supposedly uh to get access to? Because otherwise, I think these kind of things are, variances for cluster developments are gonna pop up wherever there's empty land, everywhere within the town.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Fox and I'm at Four Aldrich Circle, which is uh off Cambridge. Um I only had one point to say, when I looked at the drawing, I couldn't see how a fire engine would turn around. So do they back out then? I mean, I don't know.
That, honest, well, and that's a good question. You're right, you know, how do fire trucks, ambulance is getting there? They would ha- the, the if, if this is approved and if it, the next step would go to planning. And then planning would have to make sure that a fire truck would be able to get in there or an ambulance would be able to get in there and turn around.
Turn around.
And they, they, that would be something that they would have to build the plans around, just like, and it's not a- any development, whether it's elderly housing or whether it's just a normal development. They, the, the fire department would, has to approve the plans, so they have to be able to say, yeah, we can get a truck in there and, and
And get it out.
And get it out. Exactly, exactly. Same thing with an ambulance. So yes, that would be something that, uh that's more planning than it is zoning.
Oh, sorry.
But, but no, 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 no. It's a legitimate question to ask and it is, but it is something that uh any development, anything like that is taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh my name is Dale Fox. I live at Four Aldrich Circle. Uh the gentleman who just spoke uh kind of uh said the things I was gonna say. And as soon as uh the petitioner has uh a very creative way of maximizing the value of his property. However, uh inasmuch as he cannot make a uh development, he only has about forty feet of, of frontage on that uh street. So there's no way he could do that. He does have a very nice uh property, they have five acres. And uh but I see no hardship if it, if uh this variance is denied. And all of the, uh, or this, the attorney spoke with respect to expanding this, uh, elderly housing into an area beyond what was originally decided by the town of Merrimack would be an error, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did you sign in? Excellent.
Um, Cindy Baltins, Eight Ingham Road, um, not in a butter, but I'm in part of the neighborhood. Um, and so I agree with a lot of the points that people made already, um, that I oppose the variance. I don't, um, see the hardship that has been stated, because it could be developed in its current use. Um, and I'm worried about the extra services needed, the demands on water and sewer. Uh, when we already have issues with water already. Um, and I think my biggest objection is that it would really be a detriment to the, uh, neighborhood and the beauty of the land, and this would cut down all the trees in that area. And, um, it would just change the whole character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Understood, thank you.
Um, hi, I'm Frank Mann. I live at sixteen Cambridge Drive.
Did you sign in Frank?
I did.
Thank you very much, sir.
Um, I am president of the Neighborhood Association for, uh, Weathersfield. And, uh, my neighbors did a great job of every, everything that they, uh, expressed. I just wanted to point out, first of all, this is a block away, maybe a couple hundred yards away from that wonderful first presentation that was done. Um, and the traffic on Camp Sergeant, especially if you put that driveway right there at the lights, is gonna be a mess. The other thing, you might have noticed that a bunch of my neighbors who wrote in were from the first five or six houses in the neighborhood. They're all the ones that are gonna be directly affected by that, because they're gonna be looking at that. And a hundred-foot buffer is not gonna keep them from looking at that. So, uh, I totally against this. Uh, I don't need to repeat everything else that was said. So, thank you.
Alright, is there anybody, there's one more, yep.
Uh, Steve Pipinger, Three Morningside. I am in a butter. Uh, just wanna big up the first, uh, public interest point, I know is the criteria, I wanted to bring up again, that I did for the last one. The MVD well three that has been shut down to the sodium chloride, and that it's prohibited to put additional filting millions of dollars. Uh, and this is actually in the, the wellhead protection area yet, not just the aquifer like the last one, this is both, the aquifer and the wellhead. Um, I'm sure, you know, we've heard you can use all the alternates of sodium chloride, however, you're gonna hire some service, they're gonna probably use the cheapest if you can, unless they're legally bound to use something else. So someone's gonna buy always the cheapest thing. So it doesn't make sense to me with money on the table if we ever had to put filtration where putting in high-density housing somewhere where we already have an existing issue. It was just gonna exacerbate it. Um, I also wanna just point out that traffic, just 'cause I drive it, drive it every day. When you take that right off Continental Boulevard, you're going thirty-five miles an hour on a green light, you slow down twenty, and you take that right, you are across that driveway within less than a second. So if anyone's there taking a left, if you had a fire truck, if you had a construction truck coming in with joint construction, trying to take that left on the slope, you have people going very quickly on that right-hand turn. It's been mentioned, it's very heavily community of the school there, you have fidelity there, you have access to, uh, Nattuck there. All the western neighborhoods over in Merrimack over there is all going through that road, and Tinker, so we'll leave that aside. Uh, yeah, Lake Nattuck, I don't know how this is gonna impact that lake, but I know that we buried, we put sewer lines in there in the last ten years. Uh, we all had to pay thousands of dollars to hook up to that sewer to protect the lake. I think those were the initial, they focused on that intentionally first to protect that lake. And now we're putting hybrid, now they do have sewer, but with any kind of development like that, you're gonna have fertilizer, you're gonna have all kind of human impact. So how it's gonna impact this, you know, Nattuck Lake, which is an asset to the entire town, I'm not sure, and I don't think that's been addressed. Uh, following the spirit of the rule, I'm not gonna harp on this, the elderly zone was put into place to put, give access to a certain area of town. They cite what makes it unique is a footpath. Well, if you look in the, the zoning ordinance, development shell, where possible, make provision for onsite pedestrian access to various community facilities. This footpath goes to the school and to Veterans Park, pretty much, on the, the road there. I don't know, it's not talking about the library, post office, all those type of things where that language put in for this thing. So, unique that it has a footpath, I don't think it's that unique, 'cause that footpath does not accomplish the goals of what the zoning ordinance is trying to accomplish. Uh, again, I'm not gonna harp on it not being harmed, purchased a, purchased a piece of land that is zoned, and they're in knowledge of that zone. They are not harmed by us denying this, um, exception. And I always talk about being unique, I don't, I don't think, specifically they cited the footpath, I don't think that makes that property that unique.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hi, Caitlin Bernier at Two Birch Street. Um, I was gonna bring up the same points again, but just different address. So, um, about how, um, they mentioned actually more in this one than they did in the previous, um, presentation about how it's affordable. I don't know if it's just affordable because it's smaller, so we can only charge them a certain amount. Um, but, uh, affordable elderly housing, um, is what we need. And that it, this is not going to be providing that. Um, and also the, uh, point about how we are, um, with the wildlife. Um, and that I believe that that is, um, conservation, uh, area land over in that area. Um, that should be protected, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Denise Brett. I'm a director of butter. I live at Four Morningside Avenue. Um, we bought our house in nineteen eighty-four. We've been here for a long time. We've been very involved in, in the town of Merrimack. And when we bought this house, the considerations were what was zoning, what could happen around us. I mean, at one point, they wanted to drive Continental Boulevard for us, but then that, that didn't happen. Um, now we see that this is not something we can count on, as we are faced with this attempt to change the zoning for the benefit of someone who wants to make a better profit himself, when he too brought this property with the same zoning. The premise he is using is that we need more senior housing, when a town, and when the town states that it should be closer to what the seniors can be using. My mother, when she lived in Borreka, she, and my husband's mother, they didn't go far. They would drive maybe a half a mile, 'cause they could get to the Damula, so they could get to the market basket, or they could get to the senior, senior center that was right near their house. They didn't do driving. You would go down and you would take your parent to do the driving. We're in our seventies now. I guess I am a senior. I do qualify. I don't feel like a senior. But I can say that, you know, at a rare point, it is cheaper to stay in our house. We've made our house senior-friendly. For us to buy one of these units or any of the other units in town that have been designated as seniors, it costs an arm and a leg. You can't afford that. And I think, you know, the property he wants to, you know, he wants to benefit is close to a major road. I mean, and like he said, that footpath, you know, we walk the footpath a lot. We walk down there, we go to Cambridge, we go into Wasserman Park. We, you know, the, the neighbors on Cambridge are very generous, that they allow us to use the pathway in their, in their property so that we can access Wasserman Park to go across and do hiking and stuff like that that goes in there. But I really think that, you know, you know, Merrimack, you know, has, has, is unique. We do have nice hiking trails, we have areas. And when you do go, and I'll agree with the person who spoke about, you know, things being out in the woods and stuff like that, there are a lot of things out there. Even behind Cambridge, there's the wetlands over there. When you go through in the pathway, there's a nice little wet, beautiful views, Greens Pond and stuff like that. And this is gonna ruin it. You can't say, put a number to how it would lower your, um, your, the value of your house, but you can say that it would lower the appeal. And our abutting, we would have, I think it's twenty feet to the house, to the, on that corner there that they wanna put in. We would have like twenty to thirty feet, period, from our property line, and they would be looking at all that, and all that bright, they're gonna have to clear out. And even their map, they don't stay, they have a legend. But you look at the legend, you don't see anything in the legend. You don't see how much buffer they're gonna do, is how many trees they're gonna cut down, what they're gonna do. And they talked that they have access to sewer, but I don't know how they're gonna do that, because they do have to, from that low end on that side, which abuts our house, is very down in the slope, it goes up from there. So the sewer is gonna have to get pumped from that area up. And then it's gonna have to come down someplace, and it's gonna have to go out. They can't hook into the, the sewerage on Morningside, because that, you know, that's completely, there's no way to get into that one. And they wouldn't be able to go through our properties anyway. So I don't, I don't understand the concept, I just think that the person that's doing this, I appreciate the fact that they would like to make some money. And that's their whole deal, but to ruin a whole, you know, development and everybody's properties around, I don't think is a reason.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? I'll give you the, do you wanna, uh, do you rebuttal?
Yeah, sure, I can, I can address some of the, um, things that were brought up. Um, I guess to address the sewer, that's most recent, so it's fresh as some of mine. Um, there is an easement off of one of the abutting properties, there's a sewer line at the end of Cambridge. As was stated, this property is kind of up on a hill, the sewer would flow downhill and tie into that sewer line. Um, twelve-inch line, we didn't really see any problems, uh, with that.
And, and I would also add for that sewer line, they, when they did Cambridge Street, they anticipated this being done. So they added a twelve-foot piece of sewerage that comes off the street into this in anticipation that this would be done.
And granted that easement for, you know, for this property.
Okay.
Um, a lot of, uh, talk about the, the perimeter buffer, there are, the, the existing houses are, are built fairly far away from the property line. So not only do we have the, the buffer that's required from this development, but we also have their rear setbacks and side setbacks. Um, so no house would be within thirty feet of another house. Um, but I, I don't think that that's a, a huge deciding factor in this case.
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe that this property is particularly removed from amenities. If right down, um, Continental Boulevard, there's a shah's, there's a plaza, there's, um, the Merrimack outlets. There's, um, several, uh, you know, great things to do in town, hiking trails, as was mentioned, within walking distance of this property that are, um, would be available to, to people who move in here. Um. Uh, it's, in terms of, you know, fertilizers and, um, ice, uh, de-icing and, um, as was mentioned with the previous application, you could use green companies, that could be policed by the HOA Association. Um, so, um, if it's, uh, not allowed in the aquifer protection zone and the wellhead zone, then, um, you know, presumably it would not be done. Um. Uh, if there's anything else that the board would like me to address directly, um.
Hey, do you, is there something you wanna add?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add a couple of points, uh, directly to some of the, um, people that spoke out. Um, we've owned this property since, uh, almost twenty-five years. We're not developers from the seacoast that don't know what Tinker Road is or Tinker Street is and Continental Boulevard. Like, we've been here longer than almost every person that spoke on Cambridge Drive. No disrespect, but like, I could've used that same argument that they destroyed my woods and my setbacks and my nature when they built Cambridge behind our property. So I just want to, I'm struggling with the fact that here we are, you know, um, using this property for its best intended use. I mean, we have a need for housing, we have a need for elderly housing. I would move, uh, uh, my mother-in-law's, it would move here if we build this. So we're not some out-of-town developers developing this. We're conscious of the needs of the community. And, um, I'm just struggling with the fact that, you know, I, I understand people don't like change. I, I get it, I appreciate that, um, and I appreciate their opinion, but I could've used those same arguments when they built their house. Um, and I just wanted to point that out. Um, you know, we're, um, as far as the walking paths, same thing, you know what I mean? That, that walking path, we had the property before that walking path was built. So maybe, maybe if I was on the other side of the table, I'd say, well, I don't like all these people. All these people are gonna walk across my property. I never had anybody walking across my property before. But when there's a need, there's a need, and that's why we're here, not for profit. Uh, you know, yes, we gotta make money if we build houses, but like, we didn't build anything there for, for twenty-five years. So, um, we're here today because there's a need for, in the community. And there's also a need for people in Merrimack that have, you know, love this town, they, their kids grew up here. They have a four-bedroom house, they wanna sell that house, but they wanna stay in this town. So again, our, our properties are, are much smaller, two-bedroom, they will be much more affordable than what they have proposed down the street. Uh, that I can tell you just because a lot of the building, uh, costs are, are a direct, are a direct correlation to square footage. I mean, it's just building, it's just building materials at the end of the day. And, and the ability to make it more affordable, if you get a little bit of density relief, you can always make things more affordable. When I built, uh, built a couple of properties in Nashua, we went to the city, we worked with them, and we said, you know, they, they wanted some land from us, and we said, give us a little density and we'll, we can make it more affordable, which we did. Um, so we're well aware of those, uh, those concerns, and, um, I just want to, uh, reiterate that. Um. As far as some of the concerns with the environmental, my wife's an environmental engineer. I mean, and nobody is more aware of the environmental than me. Like, she, she works for an environmental engineering company, she's on the Board of Directors for Penachuk Water. There is nobody that hears more about this stuff than me, so, um, we will be conscious to, to, to those things as well.
I did wanna kinda, I did, uh, forget to mention, um, we did have a wetland scientist walk the site. There is no wetlands on site. We dug test pits throughout the site, and I think they went down seven or eight feet and hit no ledge. So we wouldn't anticipate any blasting or anything that needs to be done like that. Um, and it was mentioned in the last case, and I think mentioned again here, um, the precedent that you would be setting if you granted this. And this board is not a precedent-setting board. Because you grant relief to one case, you have to take each case individually. Just because relief is granted in one case does not mean it's unilaterally granted throughout town. Now everyone gets eight houses per acre. Um, it, that's, that's not how the zoning board works. Your duty is to evaluate each case as it is presented to you and, and, and make a decision based on the facts.
Now, if I could have you record that so I could play that every single time in the last fifteen years that somebody. That would be great. No, I understand what you're saying. I think the biggest concern is, by the sound of it, in, is, is the density. Um, and is, is, is the amount of homes. I mean, I mean, you're right, change happens, and, you know, uh, I can understand where, you know, they built behind your property. And, um, and you wanna, you know, do something with your property, and, but I think it's the, you know, building five houses, you know, building twenty-three houses or whatever and, and, and five acres, that's, I think that's the, I mean, if you were to, I mean, obviously if you were coming forward and saying, hey, I'm gonna build four houses, you know, it's, there, there's probably less issue from the butters. And, and it would be something that you probably wouldn't even necessarily have to be sitting here in front of us to have this conversation, but, um.
If I made one point.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause somebody brought up a good point, and, and it goes to kind of, uh, what we stated. This is, this is the best concept that we could present, so I'm not gonna tell you it would be less. But when, uh, when the plan gets to planning and they say, okay, we gotta have a turnaround here, or like, you know, four or five truck or whatever. If we have to eliminate units, that's, that's where that comes from. So when you, it, or if you grant this, it's up to these units, but it will not exceed that. And it will most likely go down from there, depending on what they, what, you know, what they could require us to do. So I just want, it was a valid point by one of the, one of the residents, and, and, and we're, there's no other way to present it other than, you know, present it our best, our, our best conceptual plan of what we want. It does meet some turnarounds with the, with those, with those things, but if they want more, we will have to, we'll have to eliminate houses, and we're prepared to do that.
Based on what I'm seeing, I would say six would be eliminated. Three buildings. I, I don't know, I don't, I bet, that's, that's a planning thing, I'm not gonna get into that, but.
Yeah.
I'm just, that's my estimation. Alright, um, is there anybody else that wants to speak, uh, in favor of this petition and against this petition? Okay, does the board have any? Okay, does the board have any more of the questions for the individuals before I close the public? Chuck?
I'd just like to say that it's an honest man that wants his mother-in-law to move to town.
Alright, Rich?
I, my only thought is this, uh.
Well, any questions for them, then, then we'll close and have a discussion.
No, I have no questions.
Alright, okay. So I'm gonna close the public hearing. Alright, deliberation discussion amongst the board. Chuck, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd be glad to start it off. First, let me just briefly say that, um, I appreciate the, um, five-point, uh, presentation that you articulated. I personally believe that that is sufficient. There is a, a great deal to say, but so much has been said already. I think it's important that, uh, we take a look at what our actual legal responsibilities are. I believe they have made their case. And, I've been in town a very long time, I've seen a great deal of change. I had a beautiful field behind my house that, um, was turned into elderly housing. And people always said to me, oh, my goodness, oh, you know, oh gee whiz, uh, don't you hate that? I said, no, that, actually, they're, they're very nice neighbors, uh, number one. And, number two, oh my goodness, it, it could've been a truck transfer station. Uh, it could've been so many things that, uh, I didn't find, uh, appealing. Now, those were the days when there wasn't any zoning. And, uh, zoning is our guideline to help us defend in court when we make these quasi-judicial decisions. And we have to have, we have to have the legal intent in mind when we do that. I certainly would agree with everybody that spoke in opposition, that's very typical. Uh, we all have those sensibilities about our little castle and our little view on our community. In fact, I think it's a testament to what a nice community this is, that they've done such a good job to make people willingly disbelieve that they don't live in an urban compact area, which they do. Uh, land is very scarce in the community now, um, our needs are great. Certainly, we've heard, uh, a great outcry for, uh, housing. Every time I hear, and believe me, I have heard a lot, say, I can't afford to live in Merrimack. Well, okay, I, I understand, I can't afford to live in Cambridge. I, I can't afford to live in Rye, I can't afford to live in Amherst, but I like Merrimack and I can afford to live here. And, providing elderly housing is at least some response to people who are elderly and say they can't afford the big houses that they have anymore with rising taxes. This provides them with an alternative, that they can stay in the community that they like. It's an option for them, as opposed to no option. And I, I see an increasing demand for, uh, deeply considering these kinds of proposals, um, and I support it.
Okay. Rich?
I do like the plan, but I don't think that this is in line with the spirit of the ordinance. Only because, and something we gotta really think about is elderly housing, um, the reason why we have an elderly housing district is because, um, not everybody who lives in elderly housing can drive anymore. And I gotta be honest, uh, that specific section of Continental, I think is pretty dangerous to be walking around. And, um, the, the, what they have within walking distance is, um, apartments, fidelity, and a shopping mall. I, I would think that the spirit of the ordinance would be to put it near Town Hall or a grocery store, or something that's gonna be beneficial, so, I guess what I can't wrap my head around is the spirit of the ordinance.
I, I would argue the walking distance to the outlets, if, if you're in, uh, I, I, and I hope that I'm a very spry my older age, but, uh, that's not that close to the outlets. That's closer, I mean, maybe closer to the Dunkin' Donuts down the road, but that's, that's about it. Um, from, yeah, that's a little bit further.
I mean, it's, it's a hike, but I guess that, that's, that's kind of, that's where I'm hung up.
Okay. Rod?
I'm, um, I'm pretty much in line with what Chuck was saying. Uh, my only concerns would be the entranceway, being so close to Continental Boulevard off Camp Sergeant. Uh, but I believe that that would be taken up by the planning board, um, and the traffic study and so forth. And that's what I've got.
I see where this is going, and, and we're gonna end up having a further discussion on this because I think this is gonna end up in a tie, because I'm kind of with Rich on this. I think the safety, uh, from that turn there and that drive is, uh, is definitely of concern. Um, I'm also not, and I've voiced this already, I, I don't like, and we, we, I don't like voting on anything without a more definitive plan, and this could drastically change. I understand that it won't exceed the twenty-three, but it could certainly dr- it'd change based upon the fact of the turn. Thirty-three, sorry. Uh, case in point, I understand it won't exceed the amount that is there. However, um, you know, not knowing exactly what's gonna, what it's gonna pan out to look like, it's difficult to, to, um, you know, it's difficult for me to approve any type of variance on this. And, and, and this isn't the first time I've voiced this, and, and I've voiced this before on a couple of other cases that we've had, uh, in the last year or so. The other thing again is, is, is the traffic. Um, there's a reason why the town of Merrimack put the elderly, um, the elderly overlay where it did. Um, not that, you know, Daniel Webster Highway between, um, Babusik Lake Road and, and around the post office aren't busy enough as it is, but, um, there was a reason why that it was, it was put there. So, to, and I understand we're not setting a precedent necessarily by nixing, by saying yes to this, but still the fact is, the town of Merrimack, um, you know, whether it be the town council, whoever made that decision, um, and to put in, to put this in an area where, like I said, the, the traffic is, uh, it, 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 it's a lot of traffic, uh, I think, to add to that small area. If it was a smaller cluster, um, I personally would, wouldn't have an issue, I guess, if it was a smaller cluster. But I also understand you have to justify the expense of going and, and, and running sewer and putting in roads and clearing, I, I, and I totally get that. Um, and, like I said, if it was a smaller cluster, or if it was like, say, maybe one, you know, two-story building with multiple apartments or something like that, maybe that, but, uh, you know, I, 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 it's too, for, for five acres, I, 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 I'm not seeing it, I'm really not seeing it. So, um, at this point, I've, if this is, uh, you, I mean, at this point, we can put a motion in place, um, but we either have to agree or to approve or agree to disapprove. There is no, um, abstention at this point.
We, uh, so I wa- I was wrong on a statement I had made earlier in the evening, we actually could continue it if, if necessary.
I don't feel that there's more information that's really gonna be needed here.
Agreed.
I don't think that there's anything more unless, if somebody.
We, we could continue it to a full board.
We could do that.
And, in, in, in what Rich was just saying.
Casey, we can't do that, right?
Uh, well, t- so typically if you're continuing, it's because you believe that there should be more information brought to you to make a decision. Um, so I, I do think it's your duty tonight to attempt to make a passing motion of some kind. If the board, um, attempts a motion and cannot create a passing motion, meaning that there's three people voting yes in that motion to either grant or deny the application, uh, then that would force the board to wait until next month when you have a full board voting. But, but, and it is my opinion that, um, it is your duty to attempt a motion tonight.
There's no, there's no, the only reasons for, grounds for continuance would be if we need more information, I don't think.
Okay, that, that's what I thought Rich was getting to, I'm sorry.
So, do I have, sir?
I would, if I'm allowed to speak, like to say, we would be agreeable to a continuance, and I think more information that we could provide you would be, you know, relative to the traffic, if you were to request something like that, or the entrance.
We're not looking for more information, I think we, I, I at least feel we have the information we need to make the decision. I, I, I mean, unless, if, I, I, I let, do I have a motion? I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put that down right now, say, do I have a motion to approve or not approve? Sir?
I make a motion that the board finds the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient. Proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's finding of fact, and further to grant the variance under two point zero one point seven to permit an elderly housing development beyond the required radius from the intersection of Daniel Webster Highway and Babusik Lake Road, subject to the following condition, and the petitioner shall obtain Planning Board Site Plan approval for the proposed residential developments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
If I could just speak to the motion?
Sure, yep.
Um, I do think that the, the critical element here in terms of conducting our business, while we are very concerned about many of the different issues that surround the ultimate accepted plan by the town, this is specifically asking us whether or not we want to have an elderly, uh, housing complex varied from the present statutory ordinance. And that, we have conditioned this, that the petitioner shall obtain Planning Board Site Plan approval for the proposed residential development. While I'm unwilling to give up our authority and right to speak to those issues, uh, we do understand that this is the first step in a very long planning process. And that, um, I think it would be prudent on our part to give the exemption for the elderly a complex, if that is what we desire, and allow the planning process to fill out the other obligations of our zoning regulations and planning processes.
Very well said, thank you. So, I, you may, Chuck, make the motion, your second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, we're gonna have to have a little bit more of a discussion then. We can't, because that would end up in a tie, so, um.
If I could add a little more.
Please.
The, uh, some of what you were saying was, you, you didn't feel that the elderly is outside of its bounds. And they're not near the library, they're not near the police station. I'm elderly, I'm seventy-one, and I'm fully functional to drive to the outlets, to drive to Dunkin' Donuts. So, mm, unfortunately, sometimes it's a stigma, uh, elderly would be a person in possibly a wheelchair that's immobile. I am not. I would qualify for this. So, although I agree that it's outside the zone, I am also, as, as many, I, I, I think it was over fifty-five was the criteria. Many of those people could probably jog to shah's, so I.
I don't even think I could jog to shah's, what are you talking about?
You're, you're not over fifty yet. So, so that, that's my explanation for, uh, thinking outside the box and allowing it to be outside that criteria.
And I, I understand what you're saying, my concern is public interest, and my concern is the, the traffic and the density. And I, I don't feel that, based upon what I've read and what I've heard, that they've met criteria as one, um, and to the extent, uh, criteria two. Um, so I'm, it's not, I, I understand what you're saying, Chuck, and I appreciate what you're saying, and you're absolutely right, you know, about, you know, planning in the, in the longer situation here, uh, or a longer process. Um, but I'm looking at it from the criteria standpoint, what, what I feel has not been met. So, you almost got me on spirit of the ordinance, I could almost see that by granting, the, granting the, the first one. Uh, granting, uh, contrary to public interest, um, I have a hard, I'm having a hard time just where that location is and, and, and the, and the traffic that's there. Um, I'll give you spirit, but, yeah, 'cause you, you do make a good point on that, but. Rich, thoughts?
I like it, I just think it's not a good location for that.
But you're okay with it, an elderly, the elderly overlay there?
I think if this wasn't sitting on where it is, I think it, I think that would be, I would be okay with maybe overlooking the overlay. I don't think this is, I don't think this is in any way comparable to the first petition that we heard, so I, I have a different feeling about it, but it doesn't change the fact that the, um, I understand what you're saying, Rod. But we're, I, I feel like we're negating a, a giant chunk of the ordinance to approve it, that's all.
What giant chunk of the ordinance are we negating?
Well, specifically, location is designed, by design for the ability to walk to places of necessity, i.e. grocery store, i.e. Town Hall, library, police, um, a, a pharmacy, et cetera. Um, and this isn't nearly as isolated as the first petition, but it's still on Continental. It's still a pretty dangerous road, twice a day, Monday through Friday. Actually, it's pretty dangerous outside those hours too, I've seen some crazy things on Continental.
Would that be discussed by the planning board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Chuck?
I think that our position should be evidence-based, and, and I'm good, I'm good with how, how we have been discussing this. I do want to ask us to look forward a little bit. Uh, this is not meant to persuade anybody, uh, for the vote that has been taken this evening. But the Continental Boulevard is going to be given back to the town of Merrimack. I don't see any way around that. It is going to become our road. And when it does, from a local viewpoint, if I was an administrator in the town of Merrimack, I would not allow Continental Boulevard to be a shortcut from the Everett Turnpike to one oh one.
Yeah, but you can't.
And if it became a town road, that's exactly what would happen, because the town can't afford to operate it as a bypass for state interstate traffic. So the, the conditions of Continental Boulevard are going to dramatically change in the near future. In my opinion.
Okay. Where are you in pass?
Then that's, then that's grounds to continue this to your next meeting date, because as of right now, there is no action that has been taken by the board. There's, has not been a passing motion to deny or grant the application.
And I don't think that there is gonna be one tonight, to be honest with you, and in all fairness to you and to the abutters. Um, you're, uh, I'm, we're gonna have, I, at this point, I'm gonna have to propose, uh, continuance to the next meeting. When we have five members on here, and it is a more definitive vote, um, to, for, or against, uh, this petition, in all fairness to you, in all fairness to the abutters, um, right now, we're, we're at an impasse, um, between us, and we can't, we can't, we, we can't have an impasse, so, um, the, um, that being said, I, I am going to, I'm gonna have to ask, eh, that being said, I, I am going to, I'm gonna have to ask, eh, to, to, to have a, uh, continuance to the April thirtieth meeting.
I was just gonna ask, uh, how, um, just for my own edification, Chairman, uh, how would that work? Do, um, does the fifth board member come in and basically read the minutes and you pick up deliberations where you left off, or do we re-present, or, um?
Can we make changes?
Yeah.
I would, Casey, I would say it's a re-present, isn't it? I would, I would.
I, I haven't seen it.
Right, I, I would say, yeah, you know, generally speaking, we, we, very rarely, if ever, do we have an impasse. But, um, I would say that there's probably going to be a representation. Um, most of the board members who don't, uh, make meetings tend, tend to watch the meetings and read the minutes, so to bring themselves up speed. But yes, there would very well be, um, uh, repr- representation. They have this material, all of the three board members that are not here this evening have this material. They have the letters as well. Um, so what they, and obviously they can watch the video and, uh, and, uh, read the, read the, read the minutes to understand what happened. Um, but I would imagine there probably would be a representation. Yes, Chuck?
I, I think it's important to call attention to the fact that I am an alternate that was appointed to fill in this evening. And I might not necessarily be in the continuance meeting.
Thank you. So noted. So noted. Yes. Um, I understand. So we're gonna, I think we're gonna have to move for a continuance then, unless, unless there's somebody's. But I think we're in an impasse. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this. Would that be a proper way to go?
Yes, yeah, we need a motion to a date certain.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this to the April thirtieth meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, abstain. And we're going to, we continue to the thirtieth. Community Development will reach out to you with, uh, what would need to be done as far as what your responsibilities will be. I, I would assume, Casey. All right.
Uh, in terms of what exactly?
As far as whether or not they, they need to re-present and, and all of that.
Yeah, I, 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 so I have your rules of procedure in front of me. I don't see any, um, language that talks about how a continuance meeting is structured. Um, I think in the past, it's kind of been the practice for, to give the applicant time to, um, you know, hopefully it'd be shorter, but do, uh, you know, at least some kind of summary to get everyone up to speed.
Refresh your memories after a month.
Refresh your memories. You also have the ability to potentially, from between now and then, you could potentially make any adjustments based on some of the stuff you heard from abutters. Um, but at that time, with a larger board, it'll be, uh, a, a more fair vote for you. It'd be also a more fair vote for the abutters as well, so that, if we have a full board here. So at this point, uh, we'll be doing a continuance on the April thirtieth meeting here at six-thirty. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Have we had that happen before?
No, but I'd love to know what Robert's take is on it, 'cause I'm sure he probably has, uh, something to point out.
Uh, what do you mean, um, in terms of your, like, the tie vote, or?
Yeah, what, what our, what our next.
Just one second, sorry.
All right. No, you can go ahead.
Oh, in terms of like the next steps?
Yeah, uh, we'll, we'll catch up, we'll catch up.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, 'cause we, we shouldn't really be discussing this anymore.
All right, so next on the agenda, we have the minutes from Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Uh, Chuck, you were an alternate, so it's the three of us. Actually, you weren't here for the meeting on February, were you? Were you here?
No, I was not.
Okay, that's okay.
But my understanding of minutes, if you've read them, is different from the conventional understanding of minutes.
If you watch the meeting, you can, I think you can vote on them, if you watch the meeting.
It doesn't even matter if I watch the meeting. Minutes are an ongoing process.
Okay.
There's no such thing as draft minutes and approved minutes. They just keep rolling on. And if you wanna know what happened at a meeting, you have to look before and after that meeting to find out if it changed in some way. So I never worry about, um, voting to approve.
Approve, yeah.
Uh, minutes because it's an ongoing record. It's not whether you were there or not, it's whether or not, uh, you were certifying the record.
Isn't in part approving the minutes is that the minutes are accurate to what?
To what was said, done, yes.
Who participated in, okay.
That's the purpose of the, so that way, anybody who's seen the video or was present can, uh, contest anything that's in writing.
Well, that's reasonably so, um, for our general practicing, um, positions. But the technicality of minutes in New Hampshire is that only action items are required to be, uh, um, recorded.
Okay.
So.
So outcomes.
Yeah, outcomes. What was, what, what was, briefly, what was the, the motion and what was the action? That's the only requirement. Um, obviously, we like to have records, uh, for further consideration and.
Chills and trees.
And, and so forth, so, um, yeah, they're, they're an ongoing effort.
Okay.
Not to, not to record the accuracy verbatim of what took place, but to give a, a brief summary and a record of the action that was taken.
Okay.
Could I, could I make a motion that we accept the minutes?
Second.
Second, okay, so.
So, yeah, I'm voting.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, abstain, four, zero. Every, a motion made by Rod, seconded by Rich, and.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Actually, you don't need a motion to adjourn.
Really?
The chair can declare the meeting adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great evening.